All right, there we go. All right, Chad, I think you can hear us, right?
I can, yes.
Awesome, there we go.
Excellent, so, all right, great. Worked through the little technical difficulties there, it makes life interesting. So, welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. And this is the Town and Norfolk Planning Board Meeting. We will go ahead and get started with introductions. So, I am remote, my name is Chad Peck, I'm a Planning Board Chair. In the room, why don't we just, I can see you all, all right? So, we'll just go around the room in clockwise. So, we have Melissa Mayo, then we have Chris Monfort, Gary Sullivan, our Town Planner, Rich McCarthy, and then our Top Administrative Assistant, Bessie Fajol. And we do not have any other Planning Board members.
Yes.
Because I know Eric is going to be joining us a little bit later.
Yep, he should be in in a little bit.
Yep. So, because we do have one member of remote, we will do all votes via roll call. So, let's go ahead and get started. Our first appointment, 7:00 PM appointment, is the Master Plan Steering Committee Meeting Number Four, so I will pass that on to Josh and his team.
Thank you, Chad, good evening, everyone on the board.
Good evening.
Thank you all again. Could I have the ability to share my screen, please?
Sure.
So, we have some reporting to bring back to the Master Plan Steering Committee and the Planning Board.
Good to go.
Thank you very much. We've made a lot of progress over the past month or so since we last met. There's been a lot of moving parts in our planning process, which is always a good thing. Hopefully, you can all see that screen now, looks like you can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. So, we have mostly an update to walk you through this evening, but we do want, we have built into that update opportunities for the committee members to provide feedback along the way, anything that you see or want to raise a point or give us some feedback, we're happy to hear that from you this evening. But did just want to basically give you a feel for all those moving parts I mentioned. So, we have a follow-up on the summary of the follow-up forums, which will be first up, and then a little bit of preview. We have one follow-up event remaining in our calendar in these June events, and we'll talk about that a little bit and how you can help us get the word out. Then we have the community survey, which is still out and available, of course, and we'll make sure that we, again, publicize how people can connect with that survey and also give an update on the excellent results which have been coming through so far. And then, we'll get into the remaining items, which we want to spend the most time on in this update, are talking about the emerging themes and the vision statement. And so, we don't have a draft vision statement for you this evening, per se, but it's starting to actually take form. We, of course, don't have all the feedback received yet, so we'll wait to make it an official draft until that point. But we did want to talk you through the process by which we're working to define a vision statement and just get your feedback on that while there's still chance to make adjustments to it. All right, so I will kick us off first. Thank you all, Master Plan Steering Committee members, for being a part of this process. I know that this is extra time above and beyond either Planning Board commitments or your daily life, and so we appreciate all the Steering Committee members who are with us this evening and along the way through this process. I know that's a commitment to the town and you're all volunteers, so we appreciate that. You all are getting pretty familiar, we hope, with our team now at this point. You see our faces around town a fair amount these days, so we're happy to continue our efforts. First, the follow-up forums. So, we've had two Beyond the Visioning Forum, which was back in April now, two follow-up forums that were open for everyone, but really targeting also to particular constituencies, which were the families or households with children and the older, more experienced population, seniors of the town. And so, the first of those was the families on May 24th. That was a session held by Zoom, thinking that that would be a less of a barrier to attend and could be done from home. Then the second forum for seniors was at Rivers Edge on Monday morning of last week at 10:00 AM and turned out to be an excellent time to connect with that group. So, these were both opportunities to expand and continue the conversation which was opened back on April 25th at the Community Visioning Forum, which was also well-attended. We had about 25 at the Zoom Forum for the families, about 45 at the, that was a hybrid session, in fact, we held it in-person at Rivers Edge and had a Zoom component there, and we had about eight or so attendees via Zoom for that meeting. So, over the course of these three forums, if you look at them as a compiled set, we've had over 100 participants, which I think is getting to be a good amount in terms of the amount of people engaging in forums in a post-pandemic world, that's a pretty good figure and consistent with what we're seeing in other communities. So, just as Andrea did at the last committee meeting, we wanted to walk you through some of the initial findings from these individual forums. So, at the Families Forum, majority of those individuals were new to the master planning process, had not engaged with it before. We brought the age demographic down a little bit, as you can see, we had not had many, as many in the 35 to 49 bracket, but that's a sweet spot for families, of course, and it was good to see that population well represented in this meeting. Racial demographics predominantly white, which is what you would expect with the town demographics. 64% of those participating had a child in the Norfolk schools. Some others had children in other school systems. They didn't, we didn't have them specify which, but that was an answer they could provide. And then, a good variation in diversity in terms of the length of time people have lived in the town, and 100% of them were homeowners. Compare that to the Seniors Forum, and as you can expect, the age range here was older, which was what was intended, and majority of those were being over 75 years old. Again, the racial demographics were very similar. Good variation in time, length of time in Norfolk, again, but a little more skewed toward the longer years here, which you could also expect, and again, 100% of those in attendance were homeowners. Still, good variation in, I think, diversification geographically across the precincts of the town. You can see that maybe Precinct One was a little underrepresented in this Families Forum, but nonetheless, still get to see people from sort of all corners of the town participating. The income, reported income on that survey was, again, in the higher income brackets overall. And we did see, in addition to the households with children, also households where there's a person reporting that they own a business or property in town and have also a senior in the household as well, 65-year-old.
So, that's 28% with additional property in town, not just their primary household?
That's a reasonable question, Chris, and I think that that question was asked in such a way that it's actually difficult for us to peel apart whether that includes the homeowners or not. Like, if someone could answer that reasonably to think that, say, that they own their home property, but that, I don't think was what the intention of the question was, so we should maybe clarify that for future meetings.
It'd also be good to understand the population density per precincts.
Yes, good point. So, in each of these forums, as you were familiar with, at this point, we did a series of presentations, then breakout discussions and small group facilitated discussions focused on some exercises which you see on the screen, just to refresh your memories. And I'll just go through those results briefly this evening, and the idea here is that all of these results are being compiled and gone through in more depth as we finish out this round of engagement. We can see from the Families Forum, the top issues were around growth management, transportation options, the desire for additional commercial growth in the town, both for the tax implications and having additional amenities and services in town. Investment in schools makes perfect sense for this population, and transportation safety, then followed by recreation, it goes on down from there. You can see some of the quotes which relate to those top issues. I kind of talked through the first one, but still, again, commercialization while focusing that and maintaining the semi-rural feel and some, you know, perspective on what, thinking about what types of businesses could fit that description, thinking about the schools, investment in the schools, making, keeping pace with growth or more resources as needed, and then, again, mention of sidewalks and safe travel around town for the families. Here's a list of what people reported they get to do regularly in the town and what happens outside of the borders of the town, what they need to leave the town for. So, some, you know, sports and recreation, of course, the center point for this population, some food options, open space and recreation and the library, those are all things that happen in town, which you'd expect, other things out of town, things like restaurants, other sports and activities and recreation opportunities, grocery stores showed up pretty frequently, entertainment or socializing, including children's entertainment, and then some banking and medical services, and there's some overlap there with what you'll see with the seniors as well. And then, assets by theme, even though, you know, additional commercial services are desired, a lot of people see the businesses that are in town as an asset, so a lot of the commercial services that are there. The rural, small-town feel is what a lot of this, the families really do identify with as a strength of the town and a reason, in many cases, that people have located in the town. Accessibility of parks or resources or town facilities, town services in general and the family orientation of the town. Thinking about how the town center could be improved and the opportunities also around Route 115 and 1A. People mentioned the train access and commuter rail as an asset, and the Norfolk Town Library, all of those things relate to those main themes, and I think commuter rail relates to the accessibility, that was how that got in there. And then, we did the same, same series of exercises with the seniors and had a little bit of variation in what we heard. So, issues around town services that are available mostly related to senior-oriented activities or the fact that the senior center is out of commission presently was a source of some frustration. Taxes and municipal finance showed up really strongly in this conversation and individuals who may not have the ability to adjust to ever-increasing taxes and municipal expenditures. Transportation safety also showed up here, the thinking about places to walk or bike around town safely, and then growth management, and a desire for commercial growth as well shows up in this conversation. You can see some of the items which were already highlighted on verbal remarks. Sidewalks from the Rivers Edge area south to town center were mentioned very specifically by quite a few people, and that's, of course, where the event was held. And then, fixing the road services and pavement for safety for everyone on the roads in general. Again, some overlap in terms of activities in and out of town. Walgreens was mentioned a fair amount, the pharmacy there, the library, barber shop, some limited dining options, pizza mentioned specifically, and then, of course, the senior center and Council on Aging, those are all things that people are frequenting in the town. And then, we had, I think, a decent comment and to summarize where someone mentioned in quote, "Just about everything else is out of town," and that includes medical care, doctors, restaurants and dining, grocery stores, entertainment and the like, and then shopping of various kinds. And then, assets from this group of seniors included the town services, so this kind of both sides of the coin there, that it's an issue but also an asset. So, people are happy with, I think, a lot of mention around the library, activities on Town Hill, community events shows up next, which are relating to that, too. Recreation and the ability to use the fields, more passive recreation, actually, walking trails were mentioned a fair amount in this discussion, and then the rural, small-town feel shows up again as do transportation options. The Town Hill or Town Common was mentioned quite a bit for the events, the concerts, the food trucks, really a highlight of what's going on particularly in these months. Library services and the senior center are all frequented by this group. And then, we had these spectrums which included six different parameters. The families thought that the affordability scored lowest in terms of the community, the town overall, and sort of not being close to the ideal in that regard. A connection to the town's history was sort of the furthest along towards the ideal, and in the middle was the overall sort of vision, how close the town is to the vision today was back toward not as close. Healthy and accessible are right in the center, as well as welcoming is pretty close there, too. You can see some variation in that affordability actually gets even a little further down the line towards not close for the senior forum with healthy being the most, the closest to ideal, the positive side of that spectrum. And then, in the center, pretty closely clustered are accessibility, a welcoming aspect and atmosphere, and how close the town is to their ideal vision, and then a connection to the history of the town, the least among those middle features. So, those are helpful overall. In addition to those two forums, we also did set up shop at the Norfolk Community Day or Old Time Day on Saturday, this past Saturday, and had a booth there and engaged people with some of you, so thank you, everyone who joined us for that from the committee as well. I thought it was really enjoyable, great to see the town in that light, and I think got a lot of good circulation and sort of promotion of the master plan as a process there. Handing out a lot of the survey business cards again, too, which is good, and we've seen a bump in the survey numbers from that effort. So, to summarize this, so this is a snapshot this evening, just to share with you all kind of early leading results from these engagement efforts, but the, the goal here is to actually compile all of these results together as a single body of conversation and feedback, and then from that single body determine some patterns from it which we can build from in terms of the issues we're trying to address, the assets we're building on, the vision for the town, and then also connect that to the survey responses as well. So, I'll pause here before we move into the next segment, just to see if there, if this brought up any thoughts or reflections from any of the committee members.
Something that the seniors mentioned was that they have, so, of course, our taxes are higher than they would like, and they don't have children in the school, and half of our taxes are school-based, and so they were saying it's, you know, they also have their HOA fees in addition to the taxes, and, you know, so they're paying to have their parking lot and all of that, you know, everything shoveled and everything plowed. And they were saying there's just, you know, it's kind of like they're paying double, it's not really double, but, you know, they're kind of paying double in a sense, is what they were saying. And they're very disconnected from the town, they felt very disconnected from the town because most of the communications right now go out through the school, and obviously, they wouldn't be on that list. So, Kate O'Brien is working on a community-wide newsletter, hopefully that would be kicked off in a couple of months, there's just so many things to iron out with that, but it's higher on her priority list, and I know the seniors would definitely love to have that. And at Community Day, we, Josh brought this sort of like Wheel of Fortune spinning thing, and we actually had a lot of children come up to the table because of that. So, they would spin and, you know, they'd land on like land use, and we'd be like, "Let's talk about land use." But it was really cute, so they actually did, since they were there, we asked them for their feedback, you know, "What do you like about town, what sports do you play?" And I have a whole list of things that they would like, but mostly, surprisingly, it was actually restaurants and Chinese and Mexican is what they would like. An arcade, a community pool, someone else said a dog park, which I would love personally.
We mentioned it a couple times, yeah.
Yeah, so, but the kids were really, they had a blast at the table, way more than I thought they would, talking about land use and recreation and, yeah.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, I think it's the dichotomy about mentioning taxes and then mentioning the quality of the roads, you know, it's directly correlated. The cost of services in town are funded by those taxes, unfortunately, so we can't get things done if we don't put money into the coffer, so to speak. And so, I think it's important for us to all understand whether you've got children in the school system or not, you know, that's, that's the support structure for the future generation as well. You know, it's important to invest in our youth regardless of where we are in our age, and it's important to invest in our town regardless of whether you've got a bike or a car or motorcycle or what, because it's all shared resources.
There was, so back to the seniors being, feeling a little bit disconnected, I was at my table was with some really great folks, and this one gentleman was on, he and his wife moved here from Needham, and he was on the school board in Needham for 20 years, and he was like, "I didn't know that you guys even had a school expansion project. I worked on that in Needham when I was on the school board," and, you know, obviously there's some information that we could, we could learn from there. And so, I think having that town newsletter would really help. But, yeah, because how would we know that these resources are out there if they're not communicated with, and so they can't volunteer because they don't know that these things exist. But he had some really kind of interesting ideas, different things that they've done in Needham, so hopefully in the future, he can help out with the school expansion project.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
All right, so, unless there's other discussion, thank you for that, and thank you, Melissa, for being both at Community Day and at the Senior Forum, so we appreciate your going above and beyond for all of that. So, let's go ahead and shift to the next item, which Andrew will walk us through, which is focused on the, I guess, final of the series of forums at this moment in our process.
Thanks, Josh, good evening, everyone, nice to see you again. So, as Josh mentioned, we've been doing these mini workshops, is what we're calling them, to try to reach these special audiences, and so, the one that we have started planning for now is an engagement event with the upcoming Small Business Association. So, again, thank you to those of you who've been helping to promote this event, we are scheduled to meet with them on June 26th. The group is already established, so it's really nice that we can join their meeting, they can help us to promote the event, and hopefully we'll get some folks that are maybe not a part of the association but do own small businesses. And this will be an in-person event at Only Prettier Design, so we hope to really just get a sense for what the Business Association and businesses in town see as those issues and challenges and opportunities. And then, also, we'll keep the survey open until the end of the month so that, you know, business owners who haven't taken it can take the survey, and then also, we hope that their employees can take the survey so that we can continue to broaden the reach and the different perspectives that we're hearing from. So, this will be an in-person workshop, this one's going to be a little different than the other two events that we held with seniors and families, and then the kickoff event that we had back in April. We see this as an opportunity to really grow on the outreach and engagement that Rich and Kate at the town have already been doing, we know that they've been having conversations with small businesses. I think many of you have also been engaging through different projects, the Sign by Law Update Project, different things, so we thought that it would make more sense to use this convening as a little bit more of a strategy conversation to dig into some of the specific topics that we know are affecting small businesses. And so, we still want to give them, of course, the overview of what the planning process is, why you all are doing this, kind of that snapshot of what, what the existing conditions look like, but we're going to have small group discussion, questions that are digging into these topics on the slide a little bit more. So, we want to hear kind of at a high level what's working and not working as a business owner in town. We think it'll be really interesting for us to hear, you know, why they decided to locate their business in Norfolk, what drew them to open up shop here, expand their business, stay in town. We also think it's always helpful to kind of get a sense for how long they've been in Norfolk, especially if they're business owners who've been in town for a long time, then they may be able to, you know, highlight trends or changes that have happened over time versus if they're a newer business owner, they can give us a different perspective. And then, thinking about kind of the next phase of this process of when we get into goals and strategies, we really want to hear from businesses what kinds of town decisions can help their business grow so that they can hopefully stay and grow and expand in Norfolk. And then, because we've continued to hear throughout all of these different engagement events that people want more businesses, commercial activity in Norfolk, we think that this is a really good opportunity to ask existing businesses, you know, what kind of synergy can the town maybe help create to bring additional businesses that can not compete but also just complement and really build the local economy? So, these are kind of the questions that we've been mulling around as we're planning out this next engagement event. We think this will be a really different conversation, and we're excited to hear from this perspective and then to bring what we hear back to you all. We, of course, encourage you to attend the event so that you can hear firsthand if you want to participate and continue to help us get the word out, but this is kind of what we're thinking, there'll be a little different engagement event, but we're really excited to meet some of the small businesses.
We did have one, maybe before I click to the next section, I just wanted to have a, we have a very practical question for the committee, which maybe you could all help us sort through, but that's that, in the email exchanges with the Business Association, they mentioned that the Only Prettier Things space has capacity for maybe 20 or 30, and we feel like we'll probably be in that range. And so, the alternative would be to look at going to the Grange and wonder if we should just go ahead and make that decision proactively, and then we can start promoting the different location, but we would like to open that up for you all and see if you have thoughts about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's pros and cons to that, I mean, I think due to the size of this workshop, it probably does make sense to be proactive and go ahead and change that, and we got plenty of time to get the word out. I do know that, Melissa could probably speak to it more than I could, but I do know that, you know, the Small Business Association meets, was it every month or every two weeks, add Only Prettier, so it'd be a change of venue, but we got plenty of time to do that and get the word out.
Yeah, I've gone to one meeting, one of the Small Business Association meetings in the space that I believe you're talking about, Josh, which is upstairs, and it's like an A-frame roof, and it's, I mean, it's a large space, it's not super tall, not sure if there's air conditioning. And it was kind of like, I don't know, the door was open, but I wasn't sure if I was supposed to go in yet, so maybe the Grange would be better just so people know that they can just walk in, because it isn't, Only Prettier typically is not open during the time of the meeting, so you're just kind of, or at least I was, kind of just like, "Do I go in, do I not, is there another door?" So, I think maybe, maybe the Grange might be better for this particular one. It also wasn't, it's not huge up there, so there was a table that could probably fit maybe six to eight comfortably, and then some couches around, so I guess it depends if we need people to, you know, have surfaces to work on, the Grange has tables that you can just pop open.
So, the question I would wonder about is, I definitely agree that it sounds like So the question I would wonder about is, I definitely agree that it sounds like Only Prettier by Design is not going to be sufficient potentially because of its space. But almost more of Town Hall, this space would be better than the Grange in terms of parking at least, because it is, it's a little bit...
We have Lions Club meetings at the Grange.
What do you get for, you know, what kind of attendance you get, or?
We get about 50 at times.
Oh, okay. All right.
We all park in the Grange or alongside the entrance to the school.
Okay.
Is there connectivity? I mean, the only time I've ever been there, I haven't needed Wi-Fi. I just brought printouts.
That I can't speak to. We haven't required it in any of the meetings that I've been to. There's cell phone reception, so somebody could throw up a hotspot. Whether or not that would be sufficient, I don't know. I mean, we do have 5G in the center of town, so it should be fine.
Yeah, plus it is accessible.
Yes, true.
So, if it was on the, if it was in the shop portion, only for everybody to sign, it'd be fine, because that's accessible, but upstairs, it's not.
Right, that's a good point.
But it sounds like the Grange is the winner.
Yeah.
If it has availability.
Correct.
If not, Town Hall might be a good fallback.
Or even, what about that, the largest room at the library?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
I haven't reserved that one before, but I see.
That's a really good space. I'll check it right now and see if it's available.
I mean, that actually might be the better fallback than, than Town Hall.
It's got great audiovisual.
It does.
And they have connectivity as well.
Yeah. That's good space.
Well, I guess the question now is, would the, would the library be the first choice?
Yeah, I would think so.
Gary's looking up the schedule now, see if they're available, the big room.
I'll cross your fingers, maybe it's open.
Okay, so we will...
It's not available.
All right, strike that.
On the 26th, it's not available.
Well, we don't want to change the date and the place and all that, right?
One thing at a time.
No, we'll keep the time. I think that we can, either between the Grange or Town Hall, I feel like we can get another space. Diane of the Small Business Association was talking about already reaching out to the Grange when she last emailed at the end of May. So I will open, reopen the conversation with her about the venue, and we'll see what we can figure out, and then start promoting that change of venue as we get this final push for getting the word out.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, so thank you for talking that through with us. That's helpful. The next is just a very brief update on the survey status, which is all good news from our perspective. So so far, I think we're building really an excellent response. The survey will remain to be open to kind of build on where we're at. But even today, we have 671 online responses and 20 paper copies, but I gather Rich might have a few more at Town Hall already again. And then, so that's a total of 691 responses as of today, which I think is fantastic. The survey will remain open to be able to capture the audience from that small business meeting through July 1st. So we're going to start a final outreach and promotional push through our various channels, which we've been using successfully so far through this process, to notify people that the survey will be closing soon, and to talk about how many people have already participated, and hopefully get people who maybe haven't heard of it yet, or have heard of it but not have the opportunity to respond, get them to add their voice to this growing number. I've always talked about, and I'll say it again, that reaching 1,000 residents, I think, is still a reasonable goal to try to get to. I also would put out the milestone of getting just a little bit more, less than 100 more responses, to get us to about 779, would be one in every 10 registered voters, which I think is a great milestone as well, and shows really a good cross-section of population of the town. So all good news on the survey front, and we appreciate everyone hoping to get the word out. And again, if you feel so inclined, you can share the survey link on your social media or through your networks. It's on the screen again there. And invite people to add their voice to the growing number of residents who have done so already. All right. Now Andrew is going to walk us through some emerging themes, again, a snapshot of those survey results. And the invitation is, if you don't like what you see from this snapshot, if you're a resident out there seeing this as a recording or this evening, you can definitely make your voice heard and adjust these results. We will update them again.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. So just to remind you, we did think about the survey as a way to really understand the issues and challenges and start to dig into that first kind of bit of our process of identifying the issues before we switch to thinking about solutions and what the town can do over the next 10 years. So we do want to just give you a bit of a snapshot, a teaser, if you will, of the survey results. We will have a much more comprehensive analysis once we close after July 1st. But we are starting to see a lot of themes, so we wanted to share those tonight. So you can see here, the top four challenges that have really emerged from the survey, no surprise, this, I think, aligns with what we're hearing in the in-person events. But managing growth and change is top of mind. I think that people want to make sure that as the town grows and changes, that it's done in a smart, sustainable way. A lot of folks continue to say that they want to see new investment and development, especially in town center. Continuing to expand on the many town amenities that are available, and then, of course, preservation and conservation of natural resources. That's been something that a lot of folks have said is a challenge, that we need to make sure that we, we think about as we do this process. Oh, next slide. Are we frozen? Sorry. So some of the opportunities that we're hearing in the survey, so an overwhelming amount of responses has said, commercial investments, people want to be able to stay in Norfolk to do a variety of different services and amenities. Over half of the responses so far really like the community events that are taking place in town and want to see those continue. Just under half of responses so far really see a lot of opportunities in having more parks and sidewalks, some of those public infrastructure amenities that can be put into place. And then about a third of folks are wanting to see commercial investments as a job opportunity. So not just thinking about things to go and do, but also having more opportunities to stay in Norfolk and work. We look at the challenges by topic. This is really important as we're shifting into thinking through all of those different topic areas in the master plan, and thinking about how these can translate into goals, and then down-the-road strategies. So one of the top challenges that we are hearing for transportation is that people want more options, especially for walking around and better sidewalks. Like Josh mentioned, the seniors really want a sidewalk from River's Edge to Town Center. I think there are others that would like to be able to get around in different ways. For land use, economic development, and housing, we continue to see a lot of feedback about supporting more investments in town center, and really making that a place where people want to come and spend their time. For community facilities and services, probably not surprising, but over half have said that they really want to make sure that the schools continue to be an asset and a strength for the community. About 58% want more trails and amenities and conservation lands. I think we've heard in some of the conversations that we've had at the events that people want access to the open spaces, not that it's just conserved but not accessible. For historic and cultural resources, one of the top challenges is that there's a want for more cultural events and activities, so that people can really feel better connected to their history and culture. And then when asked about public health, folks really want to see more of an active lifestyle and abilities to, you know, be healthy and active as they are experiencing life in Norfolk. So one of the survey questions that we ask is, what originally attracted you to live in Norfolk? So again, this is not something new. We continue to hear that people are attracted to the small-town and semi-world feel. Schools are really an attractive asset to the community and being a family-oriented place. And then, again, the quality of housing in the neighborhoods, people are really drawn to that in Norfolk. Some of the assets that we're seeing in the survey results so far, again, homes and neighborhoods, that general sense of community, I think that was really evident this past weekend at Community Day, that people have a lot of pride in the town and like to come out and be together and socialize. We also saw it at the baseball opening day, like, it's really nice to, whenever we come to these events, and see how much pride there is in the community and how people just like to get together. About half of responses, again, say schools are a major asset. And then something that we've heard quite a bit is the proximity to Boston and Providence, and I think having the commuter rail is really driving one of that, is a big asset. So kind of a similar question to the Spectrum's questions that we've asked during the forums, is we ask, you know, how close is Norfolk today to the ideal vision? And you can see here that about a third say that, you know, you're very close or close, about a third are neutral, which is interesting. Anytime that someone answers neutral, you always kind of want to dig in, but you just don't know what, why they responded that way. And then about 30% say not close or really not close. So I think this, it'll be interesting to see how this may shift as we finish out the analysis of the survey, but this might be something we dig into a little bit more. So that's just a little preview of what's to come as we dig into the survey results more. But we have, as we've done all of the different workshops and events and looked at the survey respondents as we've been tracking, we do see that there's still some under-representation in the process that we want to make sure that we're keeping tabs on and noting, and thinking about how, you know, in future engagement events, we can reach out to different folks. We still haven't really heard from a lot of renters, residents of color, which makes sense, because there aren't a ton of residents of color. So I think this is an area that we'll need to be a little more creative to get that perspective. People who work in Norfolk, hopefully the Small Business Association and that engagement event will help us to reach some of the folks who work in Norfolk. And then residents with lower incomes, we're not seeing that so far in the respondents. So we'd love to hear any ideas you have to reach these targeted audiences. We'll continue to brainstorm and think about how to reach these folks as we proceed through kind of the next phase of engagement. But we just wanted to point this out, that this is kind of where our holes are in the engagement so far. So that was a very high-level teaser. Would love to hear any questions, thoughts, or ideas for how we can think about engaging those underrepresented folks maybe in our next round of engagement.
Specifically on the topic of renters, we don't have many properties that are considered rental. So that one's not necessarily surprising.
I suppose if we did some with the Housing Authority, I mean, that'd be one way to reach out to them specifically, to give us a little bit segment there. There isn't, it's kind of...
And then lower income, that kind of like speaks to the town, in my experience at least.
We are going to try to reach out to Susan Jacobson with Housing Authority. We've connected with her at the beginning of the process, but we can certainly reach back out to her to try to reach folks of lower incomes or renters that do live in town.
What about Hill Cross Village, sending it to the...
That's Alzian?
Yeah. Oh, the Housing Authority. Yeah, Sue Jacobson works, she's with the Affordable Housing Trust, not the Housing Authority.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, well, Carol, I mean, so who's, trying to think of the director's name?
Lisa Adet.
Yeah, Lisa Adet's the director of the Housing Authority.
Great, we can reach out to her.
Okay, should be good.
Right. Can I post something in there?
Yeah, in the community room.
Bulletin board or something there?
Sure, yeah. I mean, low, lower income is...
That's a tough one, yeah.
I wouldn't know, like, I shouldn't know, so to speak, right? That's harder, I think, right?
Right. With regards to, you know, people of other nationalities, the only thing I could think of with that is typically schools will have different diversity groups, and that would have been a good avenue, but with schools closing now, this week and next, I don't know what traction we'd kind of get from that perspective, but that would have been great with like a flyer handed to those teachers who sponsor those groups.
Oh, yeah.
To take home for their children, to bring to the parents.
And that's, that's something we could do in the fall as well.
Right, that's true. And what was, can you go back one more slide? What was the other group? Oh, people who work in Norfolk. Well, that's, yeah, that's going to be limited as well. But as you mentioned, the next community outreach, it should be something that we can kind of tick off.
So we probably could, maybe through the Town Hall too, and even the schools, that maybe some of their, like...
Their employees, yeah.
Their employees not necessarily thinking that they should take the survey as well.
Well, Rich, I think you're on to something. I like what Chris was saying about the groups at schools, but why not just target the whole school? I mean, and maybe now is not the right time, maybe in the fall, but I like the idea of a flyer and just to all the, you know, to the, to the staff at the school and all the students, that they could, something they could take home. I like the idea of a flyer.
Yeah, there was, at least for Norfolk Public Schools, there was actually something that was sent out about the parent-specific focus group. And we had about 25 people join, but if we had, you know, I'm sure we could promote it more, talk about it more, get it more kind of tuned into certain demographics that we want to get. So yeah, maybe the fall would be a better time.
And I think a flyer as opposed to an email would be another good avenue for communication, because I know a lot of parents are just inundated with emails, yeah.
Yeah. And so it's kind of the balance, like, at the beginning of the school year, they're inundated with all the new school startup stuff. So is it going to get lost in the shuffle? And, and then it's like, all right, now's the end of the school year, so are the parents like mentally exhausted and they're done, their bandwidth is just not there? So it's the balance of...
I don't know. I know at least my wife, she looks at every single piece of paper that comes home to gauge whether or not it's important or needs action on, so I would, I would hope that others do similar as well.
Yeah.
So I would toss it to Josh and Andrew in terms of what do you, what timeframe we're thinking about, because we could time it so it's not right at the beginning, maybe it's a few weeks in, so it doesn't get lost in that first wave?
That wave is about a month long too. So it's like, between, it's like May and September are like nightmares.
Well, I mean, the kids are going back in August, end of August, so like if we hit September just after the holiday weekend, I think we should be, no, you don't think so?
Mm-mm. It's like from the moment they step foot back in school, straight through to like the end of September.
Wow.
They're just...
I think we have time later in the fall to, I do feel like we've put in a decent effort with the schools this spring, and so I think it's fine to sort of rest on what we've done for the moment with the schools and then re-engage them later. I agree, later in the fall, after the new year has settled in a little bit, and I think that fits well with our process. More immediately, I do think we should try to maybe get the Housing Authority engaged on the current survey, because I feel like that, that's a group we haven't reached out to as well so far, and they would, I think, help to fill, help to at least touch on one of those bullets for sure, and maybe more than one. So if, maybe Rich will circle back with you about how best to do that, but we'll also be happy to reach out to Lisa and figure out how to get her any materials that could be helpful.
You know, I am thinking though about the schools now, because if we're trying to reach out to people of different cultures and backgrounds and people of color, so my neighborhood is fairly diverse for Norfolk, but most of those children go to charter schools. So again, with the communication issue, they wouldn't be on the email coming from the school. So maybe if we're going to target a community newsletter, say kickoff in September or whatever we decide, then that would probably... we decide, then that would probably, maybe we could do it then.
Or, I don't know, how much does it cost to put a flyer in everybody's mailbox?
A lot of money. A lot of money. So the, I guess the lesson learned in terms of the Housing Production Plan update, we sent, so what, we, so the trust sent out a postcard to every single household. Didn't really draw much response from it, which, I don't know how, didn't bear the fruit for sure in terms of response.
Kids need to do some community service?
Just go door to door.
Have them out knocking door, yeah.
That's the answer, door to door. We'll train some kids up for the summer. Well, we can mull around some ideas, right? Some other ways to kind of...
Yeah, this has been very helpful, we appreciate this. And we'll, I think we have some longer-term action items and some immediate ones, so we'll follow up on those with you. We did want, I know that we want to try to get through this next segment, but hopefully what you're hearing in what Andrea and I have presented this evening is a lot of repeating themes, because that's what we're seeing in a lot of these conversations. And so that makes our work, I guess, you know, the foundations for our work are clearly being set, the moving into the vision statement drafting and discussion with you all about it, I think we're well set up for. We just need to sort of close out these next couple of weeks and we can make that official. But the vision statement, as we've gone through a few times now, is at the top of this hierarchy and a critical sort of setting of our direction together, and where the content of the plan goes overall. This is the process, sort of step by step, which we are undertaking and have started. The start is the 2007 Vision Statement. As we've talked about in some of these forums, there's a lot of that vision statement which is still relevant, almost all of it for sure. That's not a bad thing. Of course, you do a master plan every 10 years or so, and you would not expect, hopefully not, that a community is going to dramatically change direction every 10 years. So there should be continuity and consistency between the master plan vision statements. That is the case here, and I think the 2007 Vision Statement is a solid one for us to build upon. However, it is not complete based upon what we've been hearing in these meetings. So we would be adding, in bullet number two, adding the new feedback from these community forums and the survey feedback, which we just have been going through, those snapshots with you all where there's some very clear themes. That would give us an updated list of desired outcomes, which would be the foundation of the vision. What we want to try to do though is, is not just have a laundry list of like, town center is this, or, you know, the other commercial area is that, or sidewalks and the like, but we want to try to think about what, how do we make that list into really a visionary, aspirational solutions? And then imagine that the, so we'll sort of put that forward with the committee over the next month or two, and then work through it with the community as we go through this master plan process and get down into the details. But really think about the vision statement as something that we're vetting with the community and with you all as this process continues. And we might not have the right answer, but we're putting up some sort of test balloons, which people can give their feedback on. But I think that's what a vision statement should be. We should try to reach for some of those aspirations in the vision statement and then see, and then help, have people help us decide which ones should continue on or which ones might have been maybe too aspirational or not the right ones. I think also it's important, which the previous vision statement did not have, as a team, we think it's important, to have principles to guide decisions, so there will be decisions that the town faces in the future, which will not have been contemplated by the master plan inevitably. And these principles, which we can also go through and vet together, would help the town have a framework for, that would be still consistent with the master plan to make those decisions. And then the ultimate product of this process would be a vision we're imagining in two parts. So we'd have a updated narrative vision statement, similar to the 2007 Vision Statement and its construction. And then we would have a new concept diagram, which is a more spatial representation on a town map, showing these vision components geographically. So those would be the two ways that the vision would be represented. So just to walk you through what, like what this content actually looks like in this process. So this again is the vision statement, the quotes from the 2007 Master Plan. This language, still very consistent with a lot of the conversation we've been hearing, focus on the town center, helping it to come into its full potential, preserving the residential semi-rural New England character and small-town feel and village feel, focusing on business and commercial district development, which would have in that relationship both the creation of new services and amenities, but also maybe some relief on residential taxes, and then ushering and ensuring resources that are consistent with and sustaining the future needs of the town. So that, all of that, I think is valuable. New feedback, which isn't represented in that language, managing growth, that's responsive to the community needs, focusing on long-term sustainability and fiscal responsibility. Those are conversation, items we've heard in the conversation. Enhancing the quality of life by continuing to improve school facilities, recreation facilities, natural resources and open space amenities, safe and convenient options for getting around town by walking and biking, increasing housing options to help people stay in Norfolk for all life stages, addressing environmental and infrastructure investments to have a resilient town and a cleaner environment for future generations. That's some specific properties, as well as some infrastructure items. Continuing to support public safety, reliable emergency services, and leveraging the commuter rail service and strengthening access to the town center, both through the commuter rail and other means. So these are items, this is not, I think this hits most of the high notes, which we've seen in the items which Andrea and I have presented this evening. Of course, we'll go through all of this information again as these final results are compiled. This list will probably be pretty familiar after we go through it again and double check. So if you combine all that together, and the text gets a little smaller, and there's a lot of words on the slide now, but now you, you get the same language which you had from the 2007 Master Plan, you add in additional language similar to what I've just highlighted and what we've heard throughout this update. And then you get, I think, a pretty well-rounded and comprehensive vision for the town. But again, this is more of a list of desired outcomes, which isn't a bad thing. A lot of vision statements are constructed in this way, and it becomes a bit of a laundry list item, which then connects well to the other content of the plan. But what we want to try, what, I guess we're going to see this evening and how you react to it, but what we think might be a good idea is to try to push ourselves as a committee, as a process, and as a group, to translate that list into more belated but aspirational solutions. So for example, instead of the language about, the very practical language about town center should be developed as X, Y, or Z, to think of more generally, I think the goal there is to have town center be a center of town life. And then all of that other thing, all of that other items and information language falls underneath that and is a way to do that. But I think this, this framing, town center as a center of town life as an example, gives the town potentially more goals and strategies to effectuate change in the town center than just focusing on the town center as a quaint village, mixed-use place with the commuter rail. I think that that's a way to expand what we're doing there. Similarly, thinking about not just preserving the small-town feel and rural character, but there's things about preserving the visual character of the town, but also the communal aspects of small-town life. And what does that mean? How do we expand that to really get at the sense of welcoming, inclusive community that where people really know each other and support each other in the town? And I think that's a lot of what's built into that language as well. And, or moving down this list, I won't go item by item, but for example, instead of thinking about just safe and convenient walking and biking, which is fine as a statement, and we've heard that a lot, but what if that translates more into planning for a secondary town-wide walking and biking network, which may be separate and distinct from the town's roadway network? That's, that's an aspirational and visionary idea, which could be transformative for the town over the next 10-plus years. And I think that gives you a lot more strategies to then get at the issue of improving walking and biking in the town, which isn't as wed to the right-of-way on Seaconk Street, or how are we going to fit more sidewalks in where we have trees and storm drains and all the other very practical considerations? What if we think about where the utility right-of-ways are in the town and how those could be a connective feature potentially, or other aspects of what could that look like? So that's, that's the kind of proposal for how this vision statement could evolve and an illustration of what we're thinking when we think about translating these items into more aspirational solutions, which I think are more of a vision, more of a vision in vision statement.
I think that's great. I, you know, I've, I like the idea about having, you know, people want sidewalks, but really it's not just the sidewalk that's next to the road that they really care about. They do, you know, if it was something more kind of creative and a workaround, like Josh was explaining, that as long as you can get from point A to point B, nobody would really care, it'd probably be nicer if it's not on the road. That idea has never occurred to me in all of the feedback we've, you know, we hear it all the time, we need sidewalks, we need sidewalks. And I'm always like, where? Where would they go?
Yeah, and I know there's a bunch of trails throughout town that are either sanctioned or not sanctioned, or taken care of or not taken care of. But if we had the ability and the capability to maintain those in an appropriate way, and they were interconnected, as you know, it's stated here with regards to, where was it? Yeah, I mean, the connected network of open space and town facilities, pairing that with the sidewalks and the walking trails and everything, I think it, it makes absolute sense. But again, it's, it's kind of like that chicken and egg syndrome. You can't do that unless you have money to fund it, and you can't fund it unless you find a way to raise the capital for it, which means with our current state, it's a, it's a fiscal responsibility of the residents. Granted, we do want additional commercial and more focus on commercial funding, those types of things. So, it's a great vision. We just, we need to figure out the pathway. Not to be punny.
Agreed. And I think that's, the vision, I guess what, one of the sort of commentaries on that, Chris, that we'd offer is that we do want the vision of all the different components of the master plan, which we'll be developing this process, the vision statement is the one where I think we want to push for something that is aspirational. The achievability, I think we will bring, be bringing into the conversation through the goals and strategies. And in the vision, one of these visionary items, like we've stated, many of the vision statement components from 2007 are still relevant today. The hope would be that if we really do set a vision which the community is on board with, you're not, some of those, some of these items for sure, you're not going to complete in that 10-year period before your next master plan, but they may still be relevant ideas that the town can be trying to achieve incrementally over, over a lifetime. And then you think about what's given to the next generation of Norfolk residents if you really start on this process with one of the, one or two of these really visionary items, and it could be transformative for the town. So I think that's what we're trying to find the sweet spot of not just, we don't want to fill a vision statement with pie in the sky ideas, but we also don't want to limit ourselves with a vision that's only, only the low-hanging fruit achievability items.
But it's also working really well here, how several of these bullet points on the right-hand side of the slide are interconnected. And so if you make investments in one, clearly they're going to feed into the next one.
All right, so it sounds like, it sounds like there's some, we're sensing some buy-in for this general approach. Again, this isn't, these are real ideas that reflect the feedback we've given, but I would say we're short of giving you all a draft vision statement yet.
That's fair.
So we still have these pieces in process, but it gives you an idea of where, kind of the process we're undertaking, where we're headed. I see Aaron's hand as well.
Yeah, Josh and Andrew, I just wanted to chime in, I've been listening here in the background. I, you know, all of this information and collection you guys are doing is fantastic. The ways you're collecting and presenting it are clear and understandable, and it's, I just want to commend you for the effort you're putting into it, and I really look forward to trying to figure out how to bring it all together. Thanks.
Well said.
All right, thank you, Aaron, for that. And, so let's just, I know that you've got other agenda items, so I'm conscious of our time now, but the notion of identifying also some principles to guide future decisions, these, we don't have to go through each of these tonight, because these are also work in progress, but these are some of those types of operative principles that we've heard in the conversations and that you've seen in the feedback we're receiving. So these are the, we can, you know, we'll have time as a committee to ponder these and decide which ones are the right ones or not. But this is the type of principles which we think could be complementary to a vision statement in, when that new item comes up, like how artificial intelligence is interacting with the town's water and sewer system in the future, like, yeah, that, maybe you can use one of these principles to help guide that decision-making. Not that that's a real thing.
Never give the keys to the AI for the water or sewer systems.
And, so then just this last item, so if we did have this list of aspirational ideas, which are the components of the vision statement, then we would be endeavoring to give those, and this is just items on a map, but we would give them a little bit more, both a location on the map, but also try to give it a little more diagrammatic, which we haven't done, but a diagrammatic feel to what those concepts might be. Show some ideas for where an interconnected network of bike and walking paths could exist potentially, or the extent of town center as a center point of life and how that interacts with this network of interconnected town facilities and open spaces. So this would give you more of a spatial and diagrammatic look on how those ideas are applied to the town. So this would be a partner to the actual narrative statement, and hopefully with this, our crude initial pass at just, you know, giving you an attempt at that, but this would be developed further as these ideas solidify. So that's, that's where we're headed for the vision statement, and I think that would be the real focus of our next meeting together. I think that's excellent. Thanks.
Absolutely, really good work. Thank you.
Great. So, we'll get out of your way, but we'll let Andrea just briefly tell us about what those next steps look like.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. So next step, if we want to go to the next slide. So, we're chugging along on our timeline here, so we are, you know, closing out the survey, we're wrapping up these deep dive workshops. And as Josh mentioned, we have a lot of feedback that we, we've not given you the whole, like, list of comments that we've received, but now that we will be assembling quite the hefty packet since we've been doing so much engagement, and we'll be sending that to the committee so that you can not only see these like kind of higher-level overviews and summaries that we've been providing, but if you, you know, want to dig into those individual comments and really dig into the, the feedback that we're hearing and see a lot of the nitty-gritty details, we'll, you'll have that available to you. And so I think we're going to be spending the next few weeks really diving in and doing that deep analysis and putting together that summary. And then we'll be shifting at the end of the summer and into the fall into the next big phase, which is my favorite phase of thinking about goals and strategies and how do we start to, you know, help you accomplish that aspirational vision? So I think we're, you know, working our way through the timeline and have had some really good engagement. So, we are proposing that we not have a steering committee meeting in July, because we have a lot of analysis, a lot of engagement to go through. We're really digging into those topic summaries and bringing all of our data collection and feedback that we've heard into those different topic areas and putting together chapters that we'll be sharing with you towards the end of summer. We'll take your feedback tonight. We're really happy that you're kind of on board with this approach to creating the vision statement. Josh and I had a really fun work session thinking through how that's going to work. So we're excited to kind of run with it to that next step. And then, like I said, we'll, we'll try to get the survey closed and get all of that feedback. So we're hoping that we can meet with you all again in August and really have all of those survey findings and dig into the content a little bit deeper. So we wanted to make sure that you all are okay with maybe... So we wanted to make sure that you all were okay with maybe taking July off, not seeing us for a month, and then coming back and hitting the ground running in August.
I think that's fair. I think the amount of work that's been done today, it's been tremendous, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Awesome. Well, great. Well, thank you. Here's, again, just the high-level overview of where we're heading. We're wrapping up phase one, and we'll be shifting to the kind of implementation and goal strategies in the summer and fall. So we're excited to shift in that way. And as always, we have the website. We've been continuing to update it. Feel free to share that with your network so that we can continue to build our project contact list. I think we have, gosh, like, 200, 300 folks on there, so that continues to grow with every different engagement event that we have. So continue to share this with community members as you talk about the project.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Josh and Andrea.
Thank you. Great to see you all.
All right. So Rich, our next agenda item, I guess, would be we move into new business?
New business, yeah. We have a little bit of time before the public hearing, yes.
Yep. So let's see if we can take care of a few things before the 8:30 public hearing. So we got, I'll just go in order unless you feel there's another preferred method here.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. So we got 12 and 14 Everett Street A&R Plan Review and possibly endorse. So can you give us a little overview on that?
Sure. Display.
I believe that he's probably gonna.
Talk it through, yeah.
A&R Plan Show. Play.
So the plan is to really do a land swap between the two neighbors, between 12 and 14 Everett Street, which is a method to do that swapping of land is through an approval-not-requiered plan, which is presented before you. The surveyor, we're actually taking a little bit early, so he might pop in and we might be done by this, but just to let you know, he's not here at the moment, but, so it's pretty straightforward. You see there's a swap towards the back and towards the front. The frontage is not impacted at all in this case, which is, so just running through, in terms of A&R, one of the criteria is frontage on a way which is approved by the planning board. There's a sufficient frontage for the district which the property is located on a way in existence, a way approved by the planning board, or a way that is certified by the clerk of the town that's being maintained as a way open for public travel. So Everett Street is a public way. The land swap doesn't affect the frontage at all in this case, and there's not really much more to tell you about it.
What's the catalyst for the change?
And you'd ask me that question.
I hope you knew you'd get an answer for it.
Without the, I think they want a little more space around the pool and their, that's where the surveyor would be better able to answer that question.
Do you want to table this one for now and move on to the next one until the surveyor comes?
We could, yeah. We could definitely do that. If you want to do that, we might, we can touch on the next one. You might want to.
It's up to Chad.
Yeah.
That's smart. Let's, if the surveyor's not here, let's, you know, let's move on and we'll move.
Right, he's the surveyor for both of the A&R plans.
Yeah, he's for both of them. So why don't we skip over and go down to 1824 Valley Street? How's that?
Let's do that.
That was pretty straightforward. It was a planned multi-lot development for the townhouses on Valley Street. They originally were permitted through the planning board as rental, as a standard condition for the townhouses that are done through the planned multi-development within the C-1B district, which is off of Valley Street, Hill Street, in that area. If they switch out to ownership, they need to create an association that would make sure every owner within that development has proportional share for maintaining the facilities. So that's, the association was submitted to the town, forwarded to Town Council, reviewed it. It was satisfactory to them, and that was one of the conditions to review before the planning board. I will note that it does say Plymouth in there, so, but considering it's, you see how boilerplate these are, but anyway. But that's relative to signage, so it's not a.
This is the property where we had the discussion around the materials.
This is the one that are on the street, the front on the street from, so if you're heading.
Four kicks. It's on the left-hand side?
Yeah, the ones that are red, the townhouses on the red.
Because there's Hill Street, right? Hill Street's right in this.
Yeah. They just go past Hill Street, they're on the left-hand side. They're the one garage units.
Does this impact the affordable numbers at all?
No. They're already existing, so there's no, there isn't anything in terms of this. The four-bowling really comes into play where creation of units are.
Okay.
These predated that, so they're not, besides the fact they're below, actually, they're below the threshold at that time, because at the time it was 10 or more. So there was less than 10 there.
Right.
So there wasn't any affordables there.
Right, but I thought every rental counted as an affordable, regardless of cost.
Uh, not for market rate rental. So these, these.
Any rental?
Nope. So just clarify that point. If we had, rentals count in terms of subsidized housing inventory, but they need to be either from our inclusionary bylaw or other program, which is 40B, or local initiative, it's been falling to any of those.
Okay.
So, but under 40B, you can count market rate and affordable. That's the program you can. Just didn't apply in either case. There was less than the number. So now I just ask for the board if you.
So, and Town Council reviewed this, Rich?
That's correct. Yep.
Yep. And they had a couple of comments, one about, you know, it was very boilerplate and remove the Plymouth thing, and so that's all been cleaned up?
Uh, they didn't clean that up. We can have them make sure they clean it up before they execute it along with the vote.
Okay. Was there any, that was.
Everything else, that was the only, yeah, that was the only comment.
From the, from Town Council.
So these are finished units, are there already people in them as renters?
Yep. Yeah, there are renters in there. Now they're, they're going to be ownership. So there's going to be a mix, because they're not, there's some renters there.
So some of these renters are going to be asked to vacate or purchase?
No, they vacated, they might be, I don't know. I thought I had heard one of them was a renter that's going to be coming on, but that's secondary hearsay, so I'm not 100% sure. But somebody has moved out. There was a couple that people moved out a couple of years ago, and they were considering selling them at that time, but they have rented those units. These, in this case, as, you know, certain tendencies changes out, these are, they're selling them off.
So they're waiting until the expiration of the lease?
Yeah.
As opposed to selling it as a rental?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So then I think we're looking for a motion to adopt the, well, I guess it's.
Motion to modify the special permit.
Modify, yeah. Modify the special permit 15-6 to change the conditions of approval from renters to homeownership with the, you know, after they make the changes recommended by Town Council.
For 18 to 24 Valley Street.
For, yes. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion before we vote? So we will do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
19 Shire?
Yeah, 19 Shire. You want to give us a little bit of background update on that?
Sure. And if you didn't get an opportunity to check on the, oh, well, the G drive, it wasn't, this sir, huh?
I didn't dial into the VBS this morning, so.
You didn't? All right. There was an update from Mr. Brolin in terms of he needs additional time to remove the back area. There's rock ledge that needs to come down in order to get to the final grade, to put the material in there, to create the stockpile areas for material, but also to put in the second basin that's in the back. So it's taking a little bit more time than he had thought. So he's asking for a little bit more time. And if you saw the email, it was September 1st, so I was thinking you want to, so we don't fall in between in terms of meetings, to do it past your September meeting?
Okay.
So that way it doesn't expire prior to.
And progress is being made, though.
Well, progress is being made, yeah. The significant progress since the last meeting, the topco has been put in. The, I hadn't been out there in about a week or so.
We don't have updated photographs?
I do not. Last time I was out there, I was waiting for the striping to go in for the parking, but everything else is pretty close.
Okay. And now I remember they were going to reuse the, they were going to process the ledge, use it as crushed stone, like, that's not, the demand for that isn't the issue, right?
No, it's actually just getting rid of it.
Okay.
So a combination that he used some of his own employees to remove some of it, and then he's going to, he's going to need to do some blasting to get rid of it. So he's going to have to, you know, file for the blasting permits to be able to take care of the rest of it.
And this one's already bonded, right? Pretty sure.
Yes.
This one's already bonded. Yep.
Yeah, it's a $30,000 bond, is that right?
I believe, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So, any other discussion? All right. So looking for a motion to extend the temporary occupancy permit on 19 Shire Drive to September 13th, 2023. That'd be a day after our planning board meeting in September.
Should we put it a little further, just in case?
Yeah, I think I want it 14th, but.
Yeah, it's fine. We can do the 14th.
Need a little more.
You want to give it a week?
Sure.
The 20th? The 20th?
Pick a day.
Sure. So looking for a motion to extend the temporary occupancy permit on 19 Shire Drive to September 20th, 2023.
So moved.
To the second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
So if you want to jump back up to the top, Mr. Nervous is here.
Yeah, great.
He's in the room.
Do it.
You want to step to the mic for the A&Rs? We got a little bit of time before the public hearing, so we figure.
You can either grab a seat, Jimmy, or we've got a microphone, which would you prefer? Yeah, absolutely.
They asked a tough question, which I couldn't exactly remember the answer to.
Yeah, so let's take them in order. So the first A&R is 12 and 14 Everett Street.
Okay.
All right. This was, the gentleman on 14 Everett Street approached, the gentleman on the right, he was looking for more of a backyard. That's the way the house was set, if you look at it. He almost didn't have much of a backyard. So he went and asked the gentleman to do a land swap. So he's swapping A for B area-wise, you know? He's just moving the side lot line over. You know, I know if, so, so he'll have more of a backyard, and that's the reason why this was done. We're not touching the frontage. We, I think the area is pretty much, pretty much the same, maybe more, but we left, we left, we left 12A enough if he wanted to develop it with an estate lot, you know? So.
Got it.
Okay.
Awesome. Hey, you couldn't tell us that earlier?
No, sorry.
So any, any discussion from the board?
Looks like there's plenty of space between the new lot line and the pool, right? It's definitely way over 25.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was any issues with setbacks.
Since it's an A&R, we don't have to vote on it, right?
Make it a motion to endorse the A&R plan.
There you go.
Right. So we're looking to, for motion to endorse the A&R plan for 12 and 14 Everett Street.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. So the next one is 3743 Lake Shore Drive A&R Plan.
Okay. All right. This one's a little more complicated.
I'm going to try and zoom in a little bit more.
You want me to start off, and then you can segue in? I'll follow you in? How's that? Make it easier. So gentleman, come to me, his client wanted to split, which is a little lot in between there with A-212. And the question was, they're both significantly substandard lots for the zoning district, and the issue that came up was whether or not these lots had merged under the zoning act in terms of lots held in common ownership, because it's the husband and wife, but different. So, so in any event, and then the sequence in terms of when lots were purchased too as well. So knowing there's a little bit of complexity to this, I forwarded to Town Council to take a look at, to see whether in fact the lots had merged under zoning and not, because they were substandard lots. I do have, I did provide you the email, kind of synopsis from Town Council. So unlike the lots before you, the previous ones, these do not have the required frontage. They're less than frontage. However, by splitting this lot between the two, they're going to actually have more frontage than they previously have for both of those existing houses. And both of them will have a little bit more land than they had before, so they are more towards conforming lots, but not 100% towards conforming lots. So the plan is eligible for endorsement as you as the planning board for this A&R plan. Town Council posed the question, you could direct the applicant which way to split it, but they also, you can endorse the plan as submitted, which is really, I think their preference how to split it. They can decide which way they want to do.
Of course it is.
You could, I mean, you could, you could pose that question to them. I'm not necessarily sure what value. I think the value, the way they propose it, I think the, what's it, 37 there on the left-hand side?
Yes.
Actually gets a little bit better, you know, a little bit more space than they have now. And, but the main point is that you can endorse the plan. And just as a, for. just as a F for information, as you think about these plans, as you keep going forward, there is always a footnote on these plans, as, as determination of performance with the zoning bylaws, you really essentially put a disclaimer on there, um, but it's our practice that we want to, you know, check this anyway, um, so that's why we, myself and, and the building department, we check on these things with council, just to be sure that, you know, if you are endorsing a plan, you know, if a zoning issue arise, you know, and, uh, and that's been the practice, and that's what, that we do, and that's what we will continue to do, in these cases and others, just to make sure everything's fine. Which in this case it is, if you choose to, uh, endorse this plan.
So it's still non-conforming, we're just giving them a bigger lot, essentially?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
And which side is making the concession?
Actually, oh, actually, it's pretty.
We'll zoom.
Both of them are making a, well, both of them are gaining property, because the center lot is, there is three lots in there, you know.
So they're taking the three and making them two?
That's correct.
Okay.
So you're taking three non-conforming lots and making two non-conforming lots?
Correct.
But the.
More non-conforming, or less non-conforming, sorry.
They're more, they're more, they're more conforming, but they're still non-conforming. I mean, I have a little bit of a hard time endorsing something that's still non-conforming, but according to town council, as long as we're in, in increasing the conformance, we can endorse it, but I still have a hard time endorsing it, because they're not conforming. But we can do that.
You can do that, if you choose not to do that.
You choose not to do that.
Twenty-one days will go by.
Right.
And then they'll, they'll.
They'll file it with Landquad.
They'll file, well, and they'll also, they'll go down and see Carol in the clerk's office, so you can have, uh.
The center lot, two twelve, that person could sell it off and leave, uh, house forty-three and thirty-seven with substantial lot, uh, you know, with no area, because it's, it's not common ownership.
Right. It's more advantageous to endorse this plan and get this.
That's what I would think.
I'm just curious, um, on the note that council mentioned with regards to the, the line and the planning board having the capability of dictating where that line should be, or recommending where that line should be, not necessarily dictating, I don't know that town council would necessarily have said that if they weren't trying to point something out, is there anything obvious with regards to how this is drawn out that would make more sense for us to say, hey, that doesn't look like the best direction for that line to be going? Or is this, this really the, the lesser of two evils, so to speak? And then, when we're comparing this frontage to the other houses in that neighborhood, are we consistent with those houses, and those, I'm assuming, are all non-conforming as well? Right?
There could be some conforming in there, but more likely than not, they're, they're not conforming.
Okay.
Because this plan was done in nineteen forty-five.
Okay, so going back to the, the point that council made, why would they have mentioned that? Just for the sake of mentioning it, is there something that we're not seeing?
Both are split equally.
Okay.
It's, uh.
I don't, yeah, I don't know, Chris, but I, I kind of was looking at it the other day, and it looks like it was split, kind of prorated to the lots, so, you know, one, one, one lot's a little larger than the other, so that, you know, it looked like it was being split, it's not split evenly, obviously, as you can see that.
Right.
But it's, it's split prorated to the two. And I, I don't have it in front of me, but.
I have it in front of me, but it's hard to see, do we have any opportunity to make at least one of them conforming, is what I'm trying to figure out?
No.
No?
No, I looked at that too, and I'm like, okay, yeah, because could we make one? No, can't.
And just from my understanding, what are we looking at from an acreage or lot size perspective on each?
Well, alright, um, the, um, how house number thirty-seven has eighty-nine six-six square feet, and lot forty-three, or house number forty-three is nine hundred four eighty-five square feet. Is, is, um, maybe five hundred, uh.
Yeah, about five hundred square foot difference.
Five hundred square feet difference.
I think this is most likely, and this is my opinion, the path of least resistance and probably the best bet for us moving forward.
I agree with that, yes, that's well said. I mean, I, I still don't like the approach of approving a two non-conforming lots, but we are taking three non-conforming and, and improving it into two.
Well, yeah, at least we won't have that little one in the middle anymore.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and the, you know, the R two zone is forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet, so they're not even, you know.
Right.
Any other thoughts, discussion? Okay, well then I, uh, let's move to endorse the A and R plan for thirty-seven dash forty-three Lake Shore Drive.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, Rich, we're gonna pivot back to the eight-thirty public hearing for Three MacArthur Ave?
Yes.
Rich, do you want to give us, uh, a brief overview?
We gotta read it in first.
Yeah, Eric, just.
Oh, yes, yep, thank you.
In accordance with the town of Norfolk zoning bylaws, planning board rules and regulations of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, eight-thirty PM, in Room One Twenty-four in the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, on the application of John Robbins of Norfolk, Mass, for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Roadway Improvement Plan, MacArthur Avenue Lot Four-Four-Three, by United Consultants Incorporated Rent of Mass, dated April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. The applicant is seeking to construct said road for access to one existing lot at Three MacArthur Avenue, reference assessor's map, block, rest, sorry, reference assessor's map for Block Seventeen, Lot Twenty-four, in R two zoning district. Application materials are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours, at eight to six AM, Monday to Thursday.
Okay. So somewhat similar in terms of the area of town, um, these lots were created back, it was a different plan, but somewhat predated subdivision control law in Norfolk, which, was nineteen fifty-four, um, under the zoning bylaw for the town of Norfolk, uh, the definition for street, which is, I'll read it to you, which I think is important for this discussion. "A public way, or a way shown on the plan approved in accordance with the subdivision control law, or a way in existence on March thirty-first, nineteen fifty-four, having in the pen in the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land, abutting thereon, or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to such land and the buildings erected or to be erected thereon." And that's important, um, because in this case, we commonly refer to it as a paper street, the ownership of the road is privately owned by the property owners that abut it, the abutting property owners have access and rights to it, they have rights in order to make improvements to it. So Mr. Robinson has land that abuts MacArthur Avenue, and what he's applied to you for is a definitive subdivision plan, as a roadway improvement plan, by which the planning board would review this subdivision plan and determine what is adequate access and services in order to construct a single-family home there. Pretty similar, uh, in terms of what happened on the other end of MacArthur Ave, up by Hunter Ave, which some of you probably were a little bit familiar with.
This is the Hammerhead Turnaround?
Yeah, Hammerhead Turnaround. But there are differences. One is the grade is significantly steeper than the other side of MacArthur Ave. And two, we learned some lessons from the other one that we would want to address going forward when this one was, if it were to be approved by the planning board. Mainly, if, for the house construction, is that whatever material is needed to be, or to create the house, that that material is stockpiled and kept on the house lot, and not co-mingled with other material that's on the right-of-way, the road, because, um, people do go up and down MacArthur Ave, in fact, there's, um, Amazon trucks go there, it shows up on the map, so there's vehicular traffic, um, but at the moment, the other, the top end of this, it's not, because the, that lot owner has fenced it in and put material on the road, and, uh, not to go too deep into that, but it gets a little bit.
This owner?
Nope, completely separate, so I'm, I'm comparing contrasting, so, just so it kind of sets the stage a little bit, um, but it was really, a lot of critical pieces, there's one is that, um, I had gone out to the abutter, are you? No, I don't see them in the audience.
I'm in the abutter, but not on the side that you're talking about.
Yeah, not on the side, so there is, um, on the opposite side, which is on Lake Shore Drive, which is sixty-six, Lake Shore Drive, they have their, um, they have a secondary driveway at the top of the hill, because it's, it's steep coming off of Lake Shore Drive. So I want to, essentially, one of the things we discussed with, we had a meeting with the applicant, DPW and, uh, Beta Engineering, in terms of evaluating the project, it's a, one is to meet, um, with that property owner, in terms of discussing how the access would be provided, in terms of paving it, and then, more importantly, stormwater, um, because we want to make sure that, uh, you know, it's, it's gravel now, and it's, you know, it's not, it's not a paved surface at all.
Right, it's permeable.
It's permeable, so, any, any bit of pavement, um, in terms of collect rain, and then make its way down Lake Shore Drive. So, in order to go about doing that, it's really, there needs to be kind of a, a discussion how to treat things between both property owners, um, so, there, the engineer is not here this evening for the applicant, um, so what we wanted to be able to do is set up that meeting on-site with that particular property owner and discuss those issues, but then also allow the public as a whole, they could offer up their comments for tonight, which we can then take in terms of addressing, but just bear in mind, we haven't gone through the review necessarily, so really kind of collecting comments and information, then report back.
Gotcha.
Uh, the next meeting.
Now, so this road, it.
It will remain private.
At the portion where this property is, there are others that require access to gain access to their properties and homes as well, it's a shared resource.
Shared, yes, yep.
I'm the owner of the lot, John Robbins.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Here.
Or, yeah.
Here, I can.
In the micro.
Who's the one here?
No, I don't think, are they the ones who live on the other side?
Right. Lawson, Lawson.
Lawson.
No.
They're not. We'll have to work, we'll take care of it, we'll work on getting contact.
Well, I went up there twice last week. Uh, knocked on the door, she was busy, and I couldn't even get to the door, because my mobility is not that good, but, I left her daughter with my cards, with numbers to call, just tried to set up this meeting they want to do, and, um, I didn't get any phone call, any response. So I went up there with my wife on Saturday, and there were two cars parked there, but I don't know if anybody was home or not, rang the doorbell twice, um, and nobody answered, so I left the card again, and nobody responded. So I don't know what to tell you on that respect, I mean, they probably would love to keep that driveway level up in there, but the only way to do that is to keep the, um, road the same, what do you call it, Rich?
Great.
Great.
So, and I guess that can't happen, I mean, it's, to me.
So that's an existing lot?
Yeah, it's an existing lot.
That's not the lot in question, the lot in question, they're looking to put, put a house on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, can I just say that they've been using that?
Hold on, you need the microphone. State your name.
Oh, my name is Cindy Martin, I live at, um, at seventy-seven Priscilla Ave, which is the other side of that, that house, but anyway, um, that road, or that, they've been using that as a driveway for years, like, I, I've been living there thirty years, they've probably been using it thirty years, so, I don't know if that makes a difference.
It does in terms of the whole ideas of allow them to continue to use it, so we've got to figure out how to, to make that work, that's the, that's the big picture takeaway, not to, not to take it away from them.
And so was this property recently purchased with the intent of doing this, or is this something that the property owner has been sitting on and has now decided to?
So that gentleman in front of you, he's, he is the property owner, so.
You're the pro, okay.
Get a little more of the history of it, yeah.
The history of it?
Well, they answered the question.
Well, the history of it is, first of all, it's a conforming lot, it just doesn't have road frontage right now, so we're looking to put, whatever needs to be done to gain access now, back in nineteen forty-five, when this gentleman subdivided all these lots, I wasn't even alive, but if you can imagine this whole area being developed on five, six, seven thousand square foot lots, that's what could have happened, realistically. Now, back when they paved the roads, the town did all the paving of the roads, and they just went up and elected to do the ones that had houses on them now. So I mean, some of the other lots that, uh, didn't have houses on them, the five thousand square foot lots, now do, if they're on a paved road, unfortunately, they didn't pave this road, they didn't think it was good enough for something, or, they had a lot of land on it, though, but nothing else on this road, MacArthur now, can be developed. The one up the top of the hill, which you've already approved, and this one down here is the only other one that could, could possibly be built on.
And so you've owned it since the property's been subdivided?
No.
Since when have you owned it?
Uh, I bought it just before the gentleman. I bought it just before the gentleman died that owned it, and he was a friend of mine.
Approximately what year would you say?
Oh, maybe like five years ago, four years ago. But originally, I, back in, well, you probably have the old plans on this, back in, I was trying to get this approved for a woman who was owned, who had owned it for this gentleman I bought it from. And somebody, I was on the assessors' board at that time, and somebody reported me to the state as far as conflict of interest. Said I was working to approve this piece, I was getting paid for doing that, which I was not. So, you know, it was people that just didn't want to see another house being built up there. And that's basically what it was. Now, everything in the rules and regulations tells you or says to you that all these lots up here have a right to use other people, in other words, anybody that abuts that MacArthur Ave has a right to use MacArthur Ave as a way, a means, and a way to get up and down.
Right.
Now, I, my first house when I, I was born and raised in Norfolk, by the way, and I welcome all you new faces, I haven't seen anybody here. But, um, where was I getting that? Oh, but anyway, so I had, my first house I built back in 1979 was on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on Crescent Avenue. Does that ring a bell at all?
Not currently, but if we can focus on this particular lot...
All right, well, it's right around the corner. Well, what we're basically doing is, we're just trying to develop a road that, and I don't, I don't think the town should maintain this road. I think whoever owns the property can maintain this road or oversized driveway, whatever you want to call it, right-of-way, road improvement. But I don't think it's necessary for the town to do it. But that would be up to the neighbor as well, which unfortunately is not here. Or other neighbor is here. So, I don't know what to say, I'm just looking to possibly build my retirement house up there.
Okay. We had a hand raised over here, and then we'll get you next. If you can pass the microphone to him.
Pass the mic to the gentleman behind you, please, thanks.
You know, three and a half years or two years ago, this one's voted down not to build on that lot up there. Now, my brother was on the board, he has passed away since. I worked for the DPW for 13 years, and I didn't want to go up there and sand that road in the black ice and come down when there's four school buses going through, they were loaded down with children. There'd be no way of stopping. Plus, there's no room for drainage up there. Where are you going to put your drainage? There's two people up there with artesian walls. There's three drains in front of my house that drain into the lake that were put there years and years ago. But you can't add them. So I don't know.
And real quick, real quick...
Kevin, Kevin Roach?
Hold on. We need his name and address as well. And then she was next, and then we can go to you.
Going down to her.
No, name and address, you.
Name and address. Your name and address.
Oh, Raymond Malini.
Thank you.
Sixteenth Lake Shore Drive.
Thank you so much.
Lori Gandon, 73, Priscilla, I am an abutter to the actual property. I guess I just have a couple of questions. So right now, have any of you been to MacArthur Ave yet, is my question? Have you seen it? It is a path, a dirt road path that like, my daughter hikes with our dogs. It is not any type of road right now. So my question is, you're saying that it's going to be privately maintained and the town's not going to do it, but it does go all the way up to Hunter Ave? So are you going to develop it all the way up? You're just going to develop up to the end of that lot line?
Yes.
And you're going to take care of all of that?
Well, whoever owns the property would take care of that.
You just said you're building your retirement home on it, though.
Well, we're thinking about it.
But you just said you were. So you're going to take care of all of that, up to almost Hunter?
That's a problem.
But that's...
No, no, not up to Hunter.
Well, I'm looking at the lot, it's almost to Hunter.
That goes quite a bit further past that, where that...
Right.
If you look at where it actually stops, you see when the driveway comes into the land?
I see it.
And then it goes up above...
Right, we're up, where the, where the MAC in MacArthur is, that's where the lot line is. So you're going to take care of it from Priscilla...
Well, whoever owns the house will take care of it.
Your retirement home, you're not going to own it?
Or the, most of the town.
It doesn't matter at this point.
Right, so, so what are you going to do there? Are you going to pave it, develop it? What's it going to be?
Well, whatever the boards...
Because, I'm just wondering, because like, like, like he said, the drainage, so I encourage you all to actually go up there and see this road. It is a hill. The drainage curves down to Priscilla, which turns into Lake Shore, which directly goes into Lake Popolatic, directly. There's no drainage down there. Like this gentleman said, his house is right in front of the lake, there's stuff in there from decades ago. This, any drainage and waste is going to go directly into that lake. You, you have to see it yourself.
Noted. I think it makes sense for us to do a field trip, for sure.
It's, um, it, my concern is the drainage, my concern is who's going to actually take care of that road? And then also getting any type of emergency vehicle there? They're not going to be able to turn around at all whatsoever.
Yeah, those are all things we'd have to take into consideration.
There is no way that anyone is going to be able to, God forbid, there's any kind of emergency, especially if it's not going to connect all the way to Hunter. There's no turnaround access whatsoever. So there's definitely a couple of things as far as waste, environmental, emergency, fire, a lot of things that are going to come into play as far as developing that. Those are just a couple of concerns that I know, Mr....
Mr. Roach.
Roach has some questions, too.
Kevin Roach, 26, Hunter Ave, I'm an abutter to that lot. I was just curious what the word unbuildable means? It's sort of stated on that lot, on the plot plan, that it's unbuildable. And it assessed at $20,000 tax value. A building lot is usually a lot more. A building lot is usually a lot more than $20,000, so I'm just a little confused about that.
Yeah, so, good points to get additional history. There is a point made, that there was a previous decision made on this lot at one point in time, so that would be good information to have, as well as whether or not the actual lot is registered as buildable or not.
Take a look at the, so in terms of, we did have a discussion about the, in terms of the lot, being not labeled, not buildable. So that is something I'm presuming the owner presented to the assessors department and had it labeled that way, to lower the assessed value of it. So the valuation of the lot versus the buildability, there's buildability and assessment, and some people do have lots that, you know, probably are assessed a lot more than they could be, but that's up to them. Kind of make that...
So if I choose to say my house isn't worth that much, and I don't want to pay all that value, I can have it assessed at a low rate to save money?
No, not your house. We're talking about...
Oh, just only on lots of land, you can do that, though?
We're talking about land, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I'm just a little...
I mean, you can, you can apply for abatement in terms of all valuation, and then, then the assessors can...
So if you have a lot of land, you can just deem it unbuildable to save money on taxes? Then when you decide to build on it, you just, they switch it over to buildable, give you a permit?
Provided you go through these steps that you're witnessing and taking part in now. If you don't mind passing that.
Being in the real estate business for over 40 years, in order to get that assessment up on that piece of land, it needs to have a road that is acceptable to be built on. And that's why, what we're trying to do. So immediately, if this gets, if this gets approved, then this assessment will change and go up to probably the 200,000 range. But any piece of land that is, um, in the background, so to speak, that does not have existing road frontage, the assessments are pretty cheap on.
That's true, for all of the paper roads, that is the case.
Yeah. You could call this a paper road, but really, it's a dirt road.
Well, yeah, it has no frontage, it's not a real road.
You can drive up and down it, though. Well, you could, I tried to do it the other day, but like Rich said, it was blocked on the top of Hunter Ave, so, and the fence there, so there's no way to go down it. But I, when I lived up there, my original house, I used to use that road all the time. Now, it was a dirt road, but I used to use it.
So I think if...
So deliveries? You, you, so just, so you can, you definitely need to go there. I would say you can use it, but you are using it at your own risk.
Yes.
And what does fire and EMS do? Do they void it, or will they go through it anyway?
No, they, they're at the very top of the road.
Well, get, you said it's blocked off.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the top, isn't it? Now, so it wouldn't even matter.
It's like a hiking trail. It's not a road.
If a fire truck, or couldn't get out of the road?
There's no way.
Back in 1945, or whenever that road was developed, it was a road. None of those roads up there were paved, and most of them were built on 5,000, 6,000, maybe 10,000 square foot lots, a lot of them. A lot of the people that bought houses in there bought lots next to them, behind them, and expanded their piece of land to have more, and that's why you don't see. But if you go up there, if you haven't been to that area, you're going to see some roads that go every which way but loose.
Yeah.
Now, we know what the zoning rules and regulations are today, but if you were on the DPW, I mean Lake Shore, I mean Lake Street, over by Kingsbury Pond?
Yeah.
That's wicked.
That's not a pond, that's a lake.
All right, Kingsbury Lake.
It's a mud hole. It's snapping trees that come up like this.
None of those roads up, yeah.
Yeah, I know all of the roads up there, I'm not, not in particular.
All right. Out of curiosity, we do have some comments online as well. I'll read this out from Meg Sarmanian, 67, Priscilla Ave. How do we guarantee that the property owner will take care of the road maintenance in perpetuity and not fall on the town? It would be a, a private road, and so it would be at their own behest, really. I mean, they would be the ones that would be traveling up and down it, so they would be responsible from an insurance perspective as well. So if something did occur on that property and they weren't maintaining it, they would be responsible.
You know what I'd do? I'd send the fire chief up there and have him look at that road and see if he wants to...
That's all par for the course for what we do. If we can pass the microphones to Ms. Gunden.
Just to follow up on Meg's question as well, and what I had mentioned or asked before, who is just this property owner in charge of maintaining that road? Because they're like Cindy's and a butter, and the Lawsons, I believe, are abutters. So if they don't want it developed, or don't want to take care of it, is it just Mr. Robbins' responsibility? How do you decide who's responsible for taking care of this road?
I'm an, I'm an abutter to the road up right above his property.
Right, no, and those are all great questions, and I don't know that we necessarily have an answer to that right now, do we?
No, we're going to, we'll go through those questions. The, I will say that the...
I mean, you'll lose your house and every house beside you.
I mean, it will be the responsibility of, if this were to be approved, that lot owner, whether it's Mr. Robbins or somebody else, because that's going to be the only way to it. So they're going to essentially be forced to maintain, otherwise they're not getting to their, if there was a home there.
Typically, if it was accessible for all to utilize, it would be a shared responsibility for all properties on that road. That's, that's how it would be. An HOA kind of agreement would be put up, and then money would be put into the pot, and then you'd all pay for a person to plow it, or do whatever.
It has to be fully agreed upon by all parties for that town.
It would have to be voted on, agreed, and all of that, yes.
And then, as far as liability, which you mentioned, does, is he, does he...
It would be onto the HOA at that point. But if it's just him...
I'm going to guess the other two, hypothetically speaking, the other two property owners don't agree to the HOA or anything like that, is it just his liability?
Then we wouldn't even get to that point. We would have to have another discussion around what to do.
Okay.
Other opportunities could be relinquishing rights to those roads to ensure that you can never access those. You know, is it even possible to create that as just a driveway for this individual if those abutters agree to that?
They have all rights to it, so they would probably have to extinguish their rights to it.
Right.
The liability question is a good question for like each individual property owner, because whether this happens or not, there's people at a but have an ownership interest in it, so if people are going back and forth of vehicles, you know, that's on, that's important for them. Like you said, you go up there with your daughter, I mean, that's important for them to know that.
Right.
You know, and, you know...
Yeah.
But it is a private matter in terms of the liability issue. Because it's not proposed to be a town road...
Right.
...this time.
So I think, and Chad, let me know if you agree, but at this point in time, absent of additional comments or questions, we should probably wrap up and look to schedule that meeting with the additional homeowner who's not currently present.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that. We have, this is a great public hearing with a lot of really good questions that now we need to go get some answers to.
Uh, the other, my engineer unfortunately couldn't be here, but, well, not really unfortunately for him. He's on vacation, but he owns all the drainage, where the drainage would go on Kingsbury, not Kingsbury, uh, Lake Shore Drive, and where the drainage would go as far as the back half of the road, it's actually draining on the piece of property.
Okay. Absent the engineer's attendance and absent those plans, I think we're, we're probably good to adjourn on this topic for the time being.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we discuss a site visit for the...
Sure, definitely. And then the second, I think, important question is, so at the moment, your July meeting is remote, so I don't know whether you want to, you have pretty good attendance here in person, so I don't know if you want to, you, you might want to go to August, I guess.
Will we have the information that we need by July, by that meeting?
I don't know if we will have all that information, in light of the fact the Lawsons aren't here even tonight, so we still need to make that connection. There's, there's a...
Sounds like since we're virtual on July, and it's going to take some time to get the info, may, maybe it's best to push it to August.
And schedule a site visit between now and then.
Yeah.
Right, yep.
I know that's not what Mr. Robbins wants to hear necessarily, but I think that would make sense, because there's a lot of questions. I'd rather have answers to all these questions than, than not.
Right. I'll entertain one more from the public.
Sorry, I just have one more question.
Microphone.
I just have one more question about the site visit. How do you guys do that? Do you all go together? Do you go individually? Is it open to the public?
That's what we're going to discuss right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
So ideally, I think it made sense for us all to go together if possible, in a way we can ensure we're all seeing the same thing.
Yeah, I think it'll be the...
And discuss it appropriately.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'd schedule a site visit, and so then it'd be public, it'd be announced.
Right.
That was really my question.
Yeah.
Which means that, which means that, you know, we would all be there in attendance, it would get published, and it would be open to the public to attend as well.
Okay, great.
Can we travel further on MacArthur to see the rest of this road that is maybe accessible or, or, get, get the... maybe accessible or get the EMS parties there as well, see the rest of it?
We have one property owner. I don't know if he it's in the back of the room, if he'd be open to let you walk.
Rich, as far as the list of questions, it would also be helpful to have DPW opine on what their thoughts are on this and also emergency services, just.
Yeah, and that as I started off in the beginning, that was intent to try to get everybody together and particularly with the neighbors, you know, across the street to try to talk through some of these issues.
Does it make sense for us to have a representative from Beta Group as well?
It it definitely does. Yep.
So it doesn't look like we'll be able to propose a date at this meeting?
No, I think we're going to have to try to
Check on availability.
Check, yeah, check on availability.
But for the public that is here and those who are listening online, either via Zoom or YouTube, it will be announced prior to the public meeting, and the public will be invited to attend should they choose to.
Yep.
It'll be posted on the town calendar, so you'll have to just check.
You can also sign up to get updates too
Yep.
on that page.
All right.
Yes.
So you don't miss it.
So if the direction is that direction, which is sounds the direction, at least get to August, then
August 8th.
August 8th, you want to
So
Put it in at the same time?
At 8:30.
So we we need a motion date, then continue the public hearing, the three MacArthur until August 8th at 8:30 PM?
Yeah.
With do we have to make any sort of adjustment for the site visit?
We'll schedule that separately, but at least the public hearing is August 8th at 8:30.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Awesome.
So thank you, everyone, for attending, and we'll we'll get that site visit scheduled, and then we'll look forward to seeing everybody on August 8th.
We look forward to the neighborhood tour.
And I just want to say, really appreciate the turnout today for this discussion.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so our next item on new business is the so we did the 19 Shore Drive, so the Shire Industrial Park informal discussion.
I haven't seen you in a long time.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. Good to see you.
Just need a moment. All right, so that's that was your queue up for Shire Industrial Park. Load up.
So the question is, you can so first of all, it will be at a meeting. The question would be, do you want to vote to pull the bond at the July 11th meeting? It's virtual, I mean. Or would you want to defer to the August meeting so that way it could be vote virtual and in person? In case people wanted to attend in person.
We need to open a public hearing for that, right?
So it does not need to be a public hearing.
So why not now? Let's party.
We do have to provide notice, though.
All right.
So we need to provide notice in terms to the developer who are going to
That makes sense.
To find them and default to let them know, give them fair notice. And then we'll also provide notice to the the property owners within the park itself.
And the where the funds are as well, right?
Yeah, where the funds are. So you know, I think kind of depends how you want to
I'd say we just rip the Bandit off personally. What do you think, Chad?
I agree. I'd say let's do it at the next meeting.
All right, well, we'll get it scheduled. In terms of additional updates to that, I know the Treasurer's Office has requested title exam, so we don't have the results of that title exam yet. Hopefully, maybe we'll have by the 11th of July. So that that is in the works.
How much was in the bond?
$272,000.
And part of that's to complete the drainage on that other gentleman's property?
Part of it is, well, it's the whole entire subdivision.
No, I know it's supposed to be for the whole entire subdivision, but in today's value of finances.
Yes. Now, what's Jeremy talking about? Because it's not
There was one with the property that wasn't draining properly.
19.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But partially
He's on his own.
Okay, he's on his own for that.
He's got his own drainage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is he? He's the one that's at the cold side?
At the end?
He's the one who's doing the rock crushing, right?
Correct. Yep. So it's not for that.
Okay. So this would
However, there is a basin on his property for this subdivision that
Right, that's the part that I was talking
Yeah, so there is that there is the other
Completed. And we needed additional
Hold water or something.
It was holding water, right. It was
Not not that one. His was the one before it. There's
So the one that's for the development is working properly?
Yes.
But the one that's on his property is not. Okay, got it.
I mean, it is working. It's holding water, so it's
It's doing something. It's doing a part of the job.
It's supposed to be infiltrating.
Yeah.
It's both infiltrating, yes.
More than an inch a day, which is the same as evaporative rate.
So he's involved because he's at the end and and we need to, you know, the board needs to give consideration to modify that subdivision approval because the temporary coal stack, if you remember, which is 17. You granted him an extension on his temp because we need to kind of figure that all out. But we're taking our first steps. And well, I brought in the report anyway, just kind of milestones, but we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Okay.
That's that is an understatement, Rich.
Yes.
But this is step one.
Step one, yeah.
Okay.
So
So you'll get that on the agenda for July?
We'll get that on for July, yep. 15 Lincoln Road.
Yeah, Next Grid. Update on temporary occupancy.
Well, you probably read that email from Nathan Collins from Next Grid. Unfortunately, they lost the second contractor again who was working on that site, who was replacing the previous contractor that passed away. So they need to get another contractor out there to to finish up the seating and make sure it takes hold. So not only make sure the grass grows, hopefully they get a contractor that will be with us for a little while to see this through. Needless to say, they need to continue it.
So on the paper, we have 6-1 for the expiration date. That's passed. Was it 6-1 or is that a typo?
No, it was at the time.
Okay.
Hindsight be it what it was, we would have matched it up better for your meetings. That's a lesson learned, more recent lesson, to make sure we don't go in between. And just by reference, it has gotten its seal from the building department.
Right.
This is this is it's a temp seal in relation to the site plan approval.
Right.
Although technically, there's not even a building there. But anyway, they did have to sign off on it, so.
And what did what did Nathan from Next Grid request? How many days extension?
Uh, let's see what it says in the email.
I think he said at least 45.
I mean, what was left over? Is it just the seeding at this point? I mean, at this point, you don't necessarily want to seed anyway. It's too hot.
It's too hot now.
I know.
Like he could have paid my kid to do it.
Right. So then do we extend it into the fall? So that it can get seeded properly in the fall?
But at that point, he's hoping the wild grasses just grow on their own.
Yeah, nature take its over.
Did they remove all the gravel and all that other stuff?
Yeah, we had already determined that that stuff was fine. They they actually had to bring in additional gravel to do the berms that we wanted at the bottom to stop the drainage.
But within the site, they were going to back up the crushed rock that came all the way down.
Yeah, they were going to pull it back and and loom and seed it.
Right.
Let's see what is
Comcom wanted even more soil than we wanted.
What's his, uh? I'm just looking to see what he said in his email.
Do we have a bond on it?
Yeah.
We may have
Yeah.
We do have a bond. I don't recall the
Pull the bond.
We try to do as much as we can, generally speaking, to not have to pull bonds. I mean, you know, it comes in, especially in these type of situations.
I understand.
I mean, we want to be accommodating, but at the same time, this has been a lot of different things
Right.
For this one property.
Situation, if you remember when we went to that site.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I
What's the status of the other project over on Pond Street? Did that finally get finished with the town?
It appears it's in the final stretch. Yeah, the the select board voted two weeks ago, so June was the fifth meeting or whatever, the first.
Oh, it was. I think it was last week's meeting, the sixth.
Oh, yeah, it was last week. Sorry. Time flies, I guess, or gets crunched. Yeah, last week.
So we're we're finally going to combine those lots, allow them to do what they wanted to do. And so
I mean, so so Nathan, just to get back to 15, I mean, he actually requested till
He said the work will be completed no later than next week, so maybe 45 days for growth that is acceptable to the board.
Are they going to be out there watering it every day? I mean, we're hitting our dry season.
Well, the good news is it's not going to be dry for the next two weeks.
We got more rain coming?
Yeah.
Okay.
This weekend.
Yeah.
So I mean, if you want to just extend it to so we could extend it, maybe just extend it through July meeting, July 11th, and get a report. We can do a site vet, you know, site sidewalk before the July meeting.
So do like July extended to July 12th?
Mr. Peck, what do you think?
So our July meeting's on the 8th. So he's requesting like 45 days from when did he send that email, Rich?
Um, that was actually
That was a couple of weeks ago, right?
That was May 30. Yeah, that was
May 31st?
First, so it may actually be done.
So he might be done. He was looking for 45 days from May 31st, so that puts us at June, July 15th. And our meeting in July is on the
11th?
11th.
So I told him July 17th in my email, and he says he was okay with that, so.
So so that's roughly one week after our meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just want to be able to get out there and
I don't know that we all necessarily need to go out there to see if the grass is growing. Maybe one of us could volunteer.
Yeah, I know. Sure. No, yeah, I don't think I can only walk on even ground.
Sounds like you're the man.
You're out.
So so I think so I think there is a plan, recommendations, go to July meeting and then get a site.
Then we can pull it. I'm just joking.
Ah, you guys are trigger happy.
Well, the closer you get to the finish line, if you go to pull, at least board work's done. That's the
That's fair.
But anyway, sorry.
All right, any other thoughts, discussion before we make a motion? All right, so looking for a motion to extend the temporary occupancy permit for 15 Lincoln Road, Next Grid Solar Projects to July 17th, 2023.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next is the rights from road street acceptance.
So the select board did sign the street acceptance plan last week. So now it's ready for the planning board to sign the street acceptance plan, and then you don't, it's just a matter of signing it. And then our new practice is Fetsy likes to make a trip to Dedham, register your deeds, record the street acceptance plan, the vote of town meeting, the deed. And we're on record, so we don't have to worry about anything being missed by developer.
Good. Make sure you bring your golf clubs. Go down to McPuts. The driving range, yeah.
Maybe I should make the road trip.
Let me know. I'll join you.
So that's so they'll sign it. You don't really need a vote. It's just it's on there. Minutes next?
Yep, meeting minutes for May 9th, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 9th, 2023 is printed?
It's so moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So next is the planning board rep for Community Preservation Committee.
Very important position.
If nobody else wants it, I'll keep with it.
So moved.
Second.
I hear they're on flat ground there.
They meet tomorrow night.
Same.
Okay.
I'm not allowed to take on any more commitments.
That's wonderful, Gary, that you're willing to volunteer to do that. You're the you're the man.
Commend you.
It's an extra 20 hours a week, but it's good. It's good work. It's fulfilling.
I think about all the experience that they get to retain by having you there.
Oh, yeah. No, no startup, right?
Yeah, that is nice.
Kind of, yeah.
Absolutely.
So Rich, do we do we officially need a vote on this, or is it
Yes, you do.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second for Gary to be our planning board rep for the Community Preservation Committee. So we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye, aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right. So update to the fee schedule discussion is really I kind of kept it narrow in terms of my thought process was this was just for the special permits for signage. I I think in terms of the discussion that's gone on thus far, I was thinking you probably in terms of making a nominal fee, which would be somewhere in the $50 range, something in that that order of magnitude. They still will be required to pay for the public hearing notice and the Sun Chronicle until that changes. It could very well change. There is a movement generally that we might not have to publish legal ads anymore in in local newspapers because people have, you know, subscriptions have gone down and so forth. So it's not really a good means anywhere. But that's not there yet at the statewide level. But so at this point, you know, propose something now unless you had some other thoughts.
I like that idea. I'd also like to propose that for the first six months that we waive it, either informally or formally, if possible, just to try and allow businesses to take advantage of that that haven't had the opportunity in the past.
I think maybe we could take it a step further because just waiving that $25, there's actually have you looked at the fee schedule for the inspections? It's quite high. And now if it's going to be internally lit, now you need you need the electrical inspector and building inspector. The minimum fee is $400 or $500. I don't remember what, but it's extremely high.
Do we have the jurisdiction to do that for all those?
I don't know.
You do not.
Yeah, so we can only control what we have.
Can we work with someone to do that? Because everyone in town now, the businesses are going to have to rebuy their signs and go through the whole process all over again.
So that would be something that would be worked between the building department and then the select board in town. They they would be the two to work to work on that topic.
Okay.
It's definitely not yours.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can at least do that for hours.
Yeah.
How does everybody feel with that six month grace period? Or we can even extend it if we want. How does everybody feel with that six-month grace period? Or we can even extend it if we want.
I think, I think we start with six months and see, see where it goes.
Yeah, I think it would probably be, you know, some sort of campaign, if you will, out to the business owners that we have currently. So, you know, maybe it's, I would love for it to be like the more than just our twenty-five dollars that's being waived, and be happy to take that action to go talk to, figure out who I need to talk to, talk to the select board or whomever. Um, I just feel like it would be much, much, I mean, it's a much bigger savings, but it's also really helping the small businesses.
I agree.
The discussion would also include the town administrator, but.
I already, I did float the idea by, um, Kate, not Justin, so.
Well, so, I mean, a combination, select board, town administration, building department, those are the, the ones that would be involved in that topic of discussion.
Hope you don't rope me in on that as well.
Yeah.
Happy to have discussions around that.
So we definitely, that, I mean, you can soft advertise that if you want, not, but, um, but first we should, I think we should work simultaneously on that, change the fee so it's, you know. You can go lower than fifty, I just threw out a number, if you want to.
Well, I, I heard twenty-five a couple of times.
I mean, if you really wanted to make it nominal, you're not really waiving anything essentially, you could have a ten dollars.
Twenty-five seems pretty fair.
With the understanding that they still are paying for the legal ad, which is a few hundred dollars.
Yeah. And all inspections.
And then all inspections.
And this is only a grace period that we're offering.
Right.
Yeah. I mean.
I mean, is, is there an opportunity here to set precedent and be like, hey, you know, like, what, what does the money go to, honestly?
So in terms of this precedent, you'd be setting opposite precedent because you'd be essentially assessing a fee that doesn't proportionally match the work that's involved with it necessarily, but.
So we set it to zero, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're.
We can, but I mean, we need to be careful as well, because there needs to be an incentive for people to bring these things to the board as well, as opposed to just doing and acting without us. If we have that permitting check, then that gives us something that we can say, hey, like, that sign wasn't permitted, we can't allow it.
Well, it's still, I mean, setting it to zero is not letting them bypass the special permit, you know.
I see what you're saying.
Just have zero?
Requirement's still there, but the cost is absent.
Yeah.
So then it would just be the cost advertising the paper?
Cost to advertise and all the inspections.
Well, luckily, we're not really inspecting signs, although actually we probably will, because it's a special permit now, so yeah, I guess.
Well, they are, so our fees are significantly more expensive than all the towns around us, so, side note, we should maybe discuss that at some point.
Rich is all of running the list of things we need to discuss.
So they still have to get a building permit, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and now an electrical as well, if it's going to be internally lit.
Now, if somebody's doing a projections, yeah, yeah, so.
I'm sold. I like zero, provided that they still go through the special permitting process. Sorry, he wins.
He wins?
He said zero, he said twenty-five.
Oh, zero's even better.
Yeah, I think zero works.
So let's start with, then, the fee schedule.
We have to vote first.
Yeah, but I mean, we can.
And then we can amend.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I like zero, but I think at some point, like, I'm wondering if it's just, if the zero is a, is a promo for a period of time and we don't really have an end date, or if it's just, aren't the fees just supposed to cover the actual cost, like, the inspection fees and the meeting fees, you know, like, anything like that, special permit? Isn't it supposed to just cover the actual cost of, like, for Rich, I suppose, because he's at the meetings with us?
Yeah, so it, it does, so in terms of that cost, it's staff time, my time, Betsy's time, uh, mailings that we do notices. So there is that cost in it. I mean, I think, you know, there's a good case to be made that this will probably be one of the higher staff time at some point, these for a bit, after a while, you know, because it's going to be a startup, but, but anyway, it's just for the cost associated.
We can argue that it won't be as well, I mean, there's a lot keeping businesses from coming into our environment to begin with.
Just strictly on the fee schedule, I'm just talking about fees in terms of.
Do you think maybe it has something to do with pulling the bonds? Do you think it's? Is there a trigger happy?
Yeah, aggressively want to pull bonds.
It might have to do with the, uh, the municipalities first, when we figure out sewer, then we can, you know, pull more bonds later.
But in terms of your larger discussion, we, we had, just, Betsy, we talked about earlier today, is that to bring your special permit fees in line with the ZBA? Because there's a three hundred dollars, here's a seven fifty, so.
Yeah. I think a larger discussion needs to be had with regards to the entire fee schedule. If we're just talking about the signed fee schedule, I'm in favor for that, you know, probationary zero-dollar fee for the time being, with the intent to raise it to something, not necessarily significant, but representative of the cost that we incur.
So let me, why don't we do this, I think, take in some of your feedback tonight in terms of that topic, and do a little bit of homework, and then we could report back on the July meeting, because we're not, you know, we're not due to hear back from the AG on this stuff to August anyway, so we're not, you're not ready to go, um, in terms of being able to do this until we know that the bylaw has been approved.
Okay, that's fine.
So that way we could then
That's fair.
address it.
Yep.
Does that go for all the zoning bylaws that were passed in the spring?
Yes.
August?
Provided they don't ask for an extension.
Unprecedented extension for that one, by the way. August twenty-eighth. That's on the town business, probably could take it then.
Do we advertise that information, that these don't become official until August twenty-eighth, or?
It's not official until it's printed.
We don't necessarily advertise it.
I'm saying, so, so why, why don't we? Or, I've had questions, can we do this stuff now? Can you go put out your lawn sign, your, your A-frame, or? I, I think the intention is yes. I, I don't know.
You mean, let people know we're just not ready to go? I have when somebody came in the office, um, already with a sandwich board, but.
Came into the office with a sandwich board?
With a sandwich, they just were bored at the same time.
I really don't want to say what I, oh, actually. I, you know, so there, there was a sandwich board, right, so. Forgive me for this, but we already know there are sandwich boards, so I say, hey, you know, do what you want. This was a sandwich board, different situation, but.
Right.
Because I, I know I've seen sandwich boards around town that have been used before the bylaws place.
It's a similar approach that many cities and towns take once they, you know, publicly vote on some sort of legislator.
We don't have to do a good job of telling people that this is, it, it sounds like it's passed, but we don't say, hey, it's not effective until this other.
The AG reviews it.
Yeah. If we share that information.
Well, we could certainly share it, we certainly could share it on June twenty-sixth with a small bus, association too. Send an email.
I don't want to squash anything, I'm just saying, I, I didn't know what the date was when it was hopefully effective.
Well, the date is ninety days from.
Looks like we got our first application.
Okay, we got one coming, so.
A zero-dollar application? Already?
Oh, all right. Well, this is real-time work here.
That's beautiful.
Emails are coming in, uh, application coming. So, so here's the caveat, just to be clear about this, you can submit and go through this process at your own risk.
Yes.
Because it is a special permit. But because that, this, in terms of this new provision, cost-conscious businesses are really watching their.
Bottom line.
Bottom line. Don't think it makes sense for them to try to go at their own risk and submit something for a permit when, in fact, it might not, you know, we don't know yet, right? So, um, with the sandwich boards.
Pretty low risk.
You know, lower risk. Fortunately, I don't have, you know, I know next, my neighbor won't be too happy, but, um.
I'm going to buy a sandwich board, though.
Want a sandwich board?
Put it up in front of my house.
Borrow mine.
I mean, we could put something out, we could do a, we could do a press release, if you think of something like that, was passed, but technically we don't get it back to the AG, is that what you're thinking, or what?
There's a sandwich board up front, just say.
Yes, exactly, Gary. Put a sandwich board outside.
I don't know.
This is not legal until blah, blah, blah data.
Yes.
We've made how many bylaw changes? Do we really think that, like, we need, like, to, to make a significant announcement about this?
Well, for this one, because.
Eric's asking the question.
No, no.
But I mean, we have processes in place, they come to us, Rich explains to the situation to them, and then they decide whether or not they want to push it, and then if it comes to us and we're like, hey, we can't do this yet because it's not written, that's the risk that they took. I mean, Rich has already explained it to them.
Yeah, I already, yeah.
You know, and so I, I feel like we have the gatekeeping processes in place already, where we don't need to go out of our way to, you know, express, expressly state this in another way, shape, or form, personally. I think, you know, we, we go through this every, you know, six months technically, with a lot of bylaw changes that we make in this town, and.
Yeah, it's a standard practice. It's a standard process, yeah, there's no, yeah.
I understand that this one's a little bit more visible and more substantial for, you know, our local businesses in particular, but I think with Rich as the gatekeeper and the low barrier of entry of a sandwich board, I think we're very, you know, we're in that nice gray area that a lot of towns and municipalities find themselves in when they make these types of changes.
So the sandwich board didn't require a special permit, though, it was all the other ones.
Right, and so that's a, it did under the old one.
But not a special permit.
Right, it needed a permit under the old one, right? And so under this one, it doesn't, and you can just go willy-nilly, and it's up to us to choose to, whether or not we want Bob to go and enforce that, you know, and so if, if at some point we decide for him not to, then that's one thing, and then we are the ones who own the risk of walking that back later if the AG says no. And so I think we continue to operate as we would normally, personally.
Makes sense.
That way we're covered regardless of which direction we go.
And then we also have that, the design guideline document that I started, but it's still a draft, because I knew that we had time before the AG was going to review the text, but maybe we should just get that moving along so that we have it as a guide in case.
Are you, uh, going to reach out to the design board committee people?
I was thinking I probably should. I reached out before, before we actually went to town meeting, and the person that I reached out to said, just look at what other towns do, and I was like, okay.
Okay.
And so I did.
Yeah, you did fantastic job.
But I think actually for, you know, an actual review, and we're going to finalize something, there's two, so probably general counsel to make sure that it's okay that I'm using actual logos, or do I have to say, like, credit to so-and-so, so just before it's actually like on the website, and then the design review board and, and you guys as well.
Yeah, that's a.
That's a valid point.
Yeah, that's a good point, to just check on, because.
I mean, I can also just block out the logo, it's not really, I just, one way or the other, just need to know what to do.
Yeah. Like, run it by, you know, run it by town council, let's see, because. I see design guidelines all the time, I don't know how much back homework they do, like, we're talking about, but it's, it's good to have the right answer on that, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it's the season now and the AC is off, and like.
It's on.
It's on.
That is, it's not blowing cold air.
It's not.
Blowing something. Well, let's wrap this up quick.
Thank you. Pull that bomb.
Remote person.
This is the guy who's sitting in the AC. Fancy hotel room, I hear.
The AC's working great in my hotel room.
It's like, I'm actually kind of cold, I got to step out, can we finish?
All right, so we, we, we'll do a little more homework to get back to, we do have time, so.
Um, associate member position.
That's, uh.
Still vacant.
Still vacant.
No, uh, no interest?
No, I put it out on Facebook, I put it on the community page, no interest yet.
Have we ever reached out to past applicants? Would there be any interest to reach out to any past applicants? Just putting it out there, think about it.
Or former members of the board that aren't doing anything, right? I mean, that we're not aware of, that are doing anything right now?
Saw Walter today, I should have asked him.
I think, I thought you did reach out to one of your neighbors.
I did.
There was no interest.
That he was not interested at this time, so.
Maybe a calc cut isn't doing anything.
Plenty of extra time.
Yeah, speaking of that, it's off top, well, no, it's not just an off topic. It's kind of funny, because it sits in the HR, like, under that's where it is, and just, it's one of those things, like, I don't know, it's not where I would, if I was a resident, be thinking, oh, this is where boards and committees, but that's where it sits right now.
From a discoverability perspective.
Yeah.
No, that made sense.
You know, there is a reason why it is there, um, but.
Well, because there's trainings and things that you have to do as portion.
So it does make sense, but like logically, I'm like, I, I don't know.
But don't we have that butter bar or that notification spot? Can't we get some time on there?
We can, and we also can, um, we could speak to them about putting the pop-up on the web.
Flyer in the library.
Oh, yeah, there's a little.
There's the pop-up on the corner there? There's some, you know, did you see it on there? Well, it's not there now, it's like a little person with
Oh, there's really something down?
Yeah, they can put a little pop-up down there.
All right. And this is us making a plea to all of you watching on YouTube?
Yeah, this is, this, this is just not to the planning board, I mean, there are other.
Yes.
Acres out there too, so, it's a general. Maybe they could do in the latest news, hazard mitigations ending next week, so.
And then maybe we can advertise all of the, the boards and positions that are available.
Maybe we could put a sandwich board out front.
Can we get one of those, like, sandwich boards that you wear and have Chad walk around town with it?
Now, you know what's interesting, if you think about it, it's relevant, so imagine if we had that sign that Bob really tried, wanted to have, that digital message board?
That would solve the problem.
There'd be a lot of words on it, and we'd have a lot of people traveling slowly through town trying to read it.
Volunteers, volunteers.
A lot slower than we really want them to.
Yeah, but anyway, so we have to push.
But I'm serious about the sandwich board, after June twenty-eighth, we can put a sandwich board out front. We'll move on.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, you do.
Next topic.
I think it's a great idea.
Another department does it from, you know, the what you call it?
Yeah, just repurpose your, your rabies sign. Right?
Yeah, the tax collector violates the bylaw all the time, collecting taxes.
I know.
Just dropping bombs.
I'm not reporting it, though.
Don't say any names, just saying.
All right.
I gave no names.
I know.
It's all in the end, under the HR page.
All right.
Right, let's try to close this by.
Town planner updates.
So the good thing is that my updates are pretty straightforward. No update for, uh.
Waste water.
Waste war.
Okay.
We kind of, I thought we did talk about this, but in terms of we're going into the summer, we'll do Southwood in September, in terms of going over those development scenarios.
Are those the M A P C development ones?
Yes, M A P C, yeah, so, we'll wait on that. And then any other updates? So, yeah, so the, so yes, Pond Street is moving forward, solar project.
Do we know, um, their intent on that project? Is it, uh, are they still looking to develop it, or I think at one point they were considering having somebody else?
They're doing, huh?
Yeah.
Thought they're doing it.
Okay.
It sounded, yeah, at the select board meeting last week, it sounded like Next Grid was going to do it and not sell it off.
Yeah, it sounded like they were doing it. Um, they do need to submit a renewal of their permit, so they expired. Believe it or not, but, um.
It's been that long already?
It's been that long, yeah, so.
Wow.
But.
I remember those orange stakes fondly.
Yeah.
They're still there.
Still there, bring back, but, but that is moving forward, so. Um, in terms of other updates, so, um, we don't have anything tonight for housing choice. However, it will be on the select board's agenda on the twentieth, a little bit of update overview, so if you wanted to tune in. And then we'll pick it up again. We'll do follow-up at the July meeting in terms of on your agenda, but.
Select board on June twentieth?
June twentieth.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Just out of curiosity, what's the state of the senior center? What are they looking at from a?
It's supposed to be by July.
It's right there, see?
Is it July in?
Updates and renovations.
Man, that didn't make it into my RSS feed.
It's a little bit old, though, because if you go through the story, it's got July, August, I think, right?
Yeah, that may have been an old update.
Yeah, May 8th, so that was a month ago. Excellent, so July be, that's great, that's great news.
Just on the topic of dog parks, I mean, we had talked about the dog park in the old park over, what is that, Boardman? And the recreation department said that they'd look at it from a feasibility perspective, but I think at town hall, they ended up getting funding for a walking park or something, right?
No, senior.
They got $20,000 of $140,000, which is what it would actually cost to develop that park.
So they're still pending additional funding in order to make something happen with that space? Dog park might have been cheaper, or a good interim use.
Yeah.
I would love a dog park.
So you know what, pretty soon, very soon, on June 20th, you can tune in, the, our conservation agent, Caitlin Novak, and park and rec director, Anne Proto, will be before the select board, talk about the, getting started shortly on the open space recreation plan, so that's definitely a big deal.
Do you know if that'll include the property that we got from the state from the prison?
Yes, yes, yep, yeah, actually, that's going to be.
What is that property? I've seen it listed.
It's a Mitra wetlands, it's behind the Pond Street Recreation Facility, and so it would be an extension, so the idea is hopefully additional soccer fields at that same grade, but walking, possible boat ramp for kayaks, things like that, trails, conservation land mixed use kind of thing. That's the hope.
Nice.
And then, at one point in time, I don't know if it's still the case, but the, all the equipment in the skateboard park was removed.
Really?
Yeah. Has that been?
I think that's a permanent removal.
It's a permanent removal? Do we know why?
I get hurt and they take away my skateboard park.
I'm just, I mean, town planner.
I, I don't know all, quite all, but I try my best, but.
Usually you're pretty good.
Yeah.
That's why I asked.
I thought it was because of why, I don't know, I, let me.
Some of it was getting old.
Getting old, well, dated, yeah.
So is the intent to put in up-to-date stuff?
I don't think so.
I know it's not a question for you, I'm just.
I'm not thinking, it would be, anyone could answer, I didn't think it was coming back, actually.
I'm just curious because it seems like we have a lot of requests for things from a recreation perspective, especially with the master plan put in place, but here we are, we're not necessarily catering to that demographic of, you know, children and teens and, you know, pre-adults from that perspective, aside from organized sports, that was a consistently used space, which I, I know my children loved going to, that's.
I used it every Saturday morning.
Yeah.
In the warm, like in non-winter.
Skateboarding?
Yeah.
Is it?
So.
Well, I think, then again, I'll make another.
Bit for the 20th.
Yeah, well, that's more the intro, but in terms of that process, I think that's important because I think, you know.
Yes, yeah, for the master plan.
Yeah, because if, you know, those are, I think having a voice for non-organized sports is important.
Right.
Not everybody does.
I actually hear that a lot around here from parents whose kids aren't necessarily into sports, you know, organized sports, and they'll just say, there's really nothing else to do. KP is typically known for sports and, and music too, so I'm actually surprised to hear that so many parents say, if you don't play sports, you have nothing else to do.
Yeah, and I, you know, the rec actually had a skateboarding program that they provided, which my son participated in and loved.
Oh.
And, you know, so I thought it was an interesting choice for them to do that and then remove the equipment.
So you definitely would be the one to, you know, because you were, you know, more involved, you know, user and your children, the, yeah, no, I think it is important, though, in terms of that non-organized sports.
We have, someone on Zoom's got a question, Donna's got a question.
She might have an, she might have an answer to the question, but.
That's true.
Yeah, she might.
Hello, Donna Jones.
Hi, Donna.
Here she goes, she's going to tell us exactly what happened.
By watching the recreation department, recreation commission meetings on Zoom, I learned that the skateboard park, park fell apart, and that's why it was removed. And people are asking, when are we going to get pickleball? And Anna's exploring where it could be, what surface it should be, and so, you know, and then tennis courts too, the, the quality of it, she's analyzing what, what's the price to fix it, how many people use it, is it in the right place? So your questions should be direct, I think should be directed to recreation.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Context, thank you. It is curious, though, that the multi-piece skateboarding park all fell apart.
At once.
At once. Thank you.
You're welcome.